Good morning.
Good morning.
We have to call this meeting to order. I beg you to begin here with one question. We have no public comment this morning, so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which we have approval of a minute for the commissioners if you just take time to look at the minutes for tomorrow and we will approve accordingly. I've made some slight adjustments to the agenda today. First of all, we have a very robust agenda today and it's healthy, so we can just stay focused and we would like to move, I would like to move this meeting along today because if not, you'll be here through the night. I would like to switch things out. I have tab number 15 coming forth and that's Mr. Chris Pumper. He has an important meeting this morning. I would like to get him in and out. So, Chris Pumper, if you please, would come forth and number tab number 15 is authorization for being in the road design standards at Fox Hall.
Some moves to adjust the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. I would say yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Commissioners, for having us here this morning. We'll be brief, extremely brief. It'd just take one moment to introduce our newest team member. He's born and raised here in Douglas County in District Four, Mr. Jonathan Lupo. So Jonathan is our Director of Business Recruitment. Jonathan worked for the Georgia Department of Economic Development in the International Trade Division and then also worked for the state of Louisiana in their foreign direct investment board. So he brings a wealth of talent and also a wealth of local knowledge here to our team and we're really excited to have him onboard.
Okay. Jonathan, would you like to come up and just say a few words to us?
I'll just, thank you for welcoming. It's nice to be here, nice to be back home.
Okay, Jonathan, if you could repeat your last name for the code.
Uh, Lupo.
Go to the podium if you don't mind. I have a little shot this morning.
Jonathan Lupo, L-U-P-O. I don't speak any Cajun. It's all Georgia.
Thank you so much and welcome.
So, once again, thank you for your flexibility, one, on moving the agenda item up, and two, on the flexibility of the vagueness of the agenda item itself. It's taken us a minute to get things put together here, but we are talking about some amendments to what's allowable on the resort for Fox Hall. So I wanted to kind of give you a brief kind of synopsis of where we are and then kind of talk about what our actual request is before you this morning. So, like I said, I'm here to give you that brief update. We also have Mr. Harrison Merrill Senior and Junior that are here as well. The first only update for Fox Hall, Fox Hall is eighty-five to ninety, ninety percent completed with the architectural drawings by the Cooper Carey Architectural Firm. That's for the two-hundred-and-fifty-room Weston Hotel and Conference Center. They're about eighty-five percent complete with the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing drawings, which means they're down to the nuts and bolts about how to build everything. They're also at the same level with interior design drawings by the Ginsler Architectural and Design Firm. To date, they've spent roughly three million dollars in the last eleven months on these architectural and design and landscape and engineering work that's been done. I know Howard has been working very hard with that, so a lot of activity that's happening. In addition to that, Fox Hall has completed and opened seventy-four rooms in the villas plus an additional thirteen rooms in two lodges. So there are eighty-seven rooms that are active right now. And I'll show you just a few. This actually, this is a real picture. So this is actually some of the villas on one of the lakes on property. This is an interior of one of them. Another interior shot, another interior shot, and we'll get to that second. So wonderful work that has been done thus far. And like I mentioned, there's eighty-seven rooms that are open today that is kind of reaching towards our four-hundred-and-fifty-room total. In the early spring, they will begin construction on the sixteen-thousand-square-foot clubhouse and restaurant, which will also offer an event venue and offices next to the swimming center. So that's good news. Progress on the development is being made and final details are underway for water, sewer, and road infrastructure. So we are making progress. So now to our request. As I mentioned, our request is, we're going to work in on a number of things. We're trying to get to that critical, that critical line of getting towards a hundred percent on all of those things that I mentioned. So as the design team has put pen and pencil to paper, it has been determined that a clarification is needed in the resort zoning approved on May 5th, 2009, and then following that on February 7th, 2012. So you all should have received a document, a one-pager with this. So here, there are the supplemental standards that are now in place for the project called the Fox Hall Resort and Sporting Club Planned Unit Development. And you will see that paragraph five on your sheet there, and I apologize for the print, deals with curb and gutter and sidewalks. Part B deals with the multi-use trail network that will be linked to the county's regional transit system, which Commissioner Mulcair has championed. So first, Fox Hall and its design team would like to clarify that sidewalks will not be installed on the interior streets in light of the significant trail network that will connect all of the internal structures with trails either adjacent to or nearby all of all the roads. So I know the typical county standard is sidewalks are installed on all of the roads, but the way the resort is laid out, the trail network will connect individuals to all of the facilities throughout, throughout the development. So that's one point. Related to that, Fox Hall will also use swales rather than curbs and guttering along all of the interior roads, and we believe that is consistent with the original approvals. So this is, like I said, going back to the standards centered around public roads and the requirements of curb and gutter and sidewalks. Next, and because of the residential resort field that is a part of the development standards, Fox Hall proposes to eliminate any A-cell and D-cell lanes in the interior roads, is all the interior roads on property, leaving them out of the main entry on Capes Ferry only. So Capes Ferry Road will still have A-cell and D-cell lanes, but kind of meaning within the character of the resort, trying to eliminate the A-cell, D-cell lanes on the interior roads. Finally, in one location, the whole design group has thought that it would be a good touch to have one bridge made out of timbers and not just our typical concrete institutional bridge. They are looking at options that will be capable of holding a fire truck, so making sure that we're ensuring safety is maintained on property. What they have seen so far is a product that will hold the weight of a tractor-trailer. From a design approval standpoint, there are instances when both the state and local governments have design approval authority. Fox Hall requests that if there is a binding state regulation, that the state standard be enforced. This has come up recently regarding the county fire marshal requiring that a road be constructed along the rear of the Weston so that a ladder truck can reach the top of the building. And I'll have a couple of pictures here describing that. We believe that there are ways to ensure one-hundred-percent occupant and public safety without, occupant and public safety without that road requirement, and it can be done by creating an oval-shaped lanes that can accomplish the safety concerns while meeting the state standards. Safety is a number-one priority, but Fox Hall believes it can be achieved with a bit of design sensitivity at the same time. To that extent, Fox Hall requests that you permit the use of State of Georgia codes and requirements rather than the local county regulations in the event of a conflict. And I'm showing you some examples, this one's kind of hard to see, but other resorts, it is very hard to see. Can this? Yeah. Well, what you have here is a resort hotel and a river right behind it. One of the requirements has been placed is that a fire truck road be along the entire rear of the building, so along this, so it would kind of be like a straight line, kind of like. And what they're saying is that state standards don't have that same level of requirement, and what that does is it basically kind of changes the feel, the integrity of the resort field, so when you're coming out of the rear of the facility. And so as you see, this one here is bounded by a river on the rear. And, uh, that's a better picture. So this is the Ritz-Carlton in Lake Okoni, and as you see the rear of this, the Lake Okoni is behind it, and all are paths behind the resort. And so it's really just trying to show consistency in that there are a number of resorts that have, that are like this, which is something similar. Fox Hall has proposed in kind of an oval shape that can serve for a fire truck, but then that oval shape will kind of be like this, instead of one large twenty-six-foot-wide road running along the rear of the resort. It just takes away from the resort field in and of itself. So I've laid out a few things. Some of those are related to public road requirements and also related to the standards that are being asked of them as it relates to the emergency truck lane. So once again, it is not taking away from the public safety. There are state standards that, which apparently the county standards kind of supersede the state standards, and so they're trying to stick with what the state standards are. Is there any questions?
Any questions, Chairman, for the Board of Commissioners, Vice Chairman Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, that was a lot, but I think I got it. Let me make sure I get this. So I heard a couple of things. I'm going to go back to '09 and '12 in your opening comments. And again, what I heard is there's some standards in place. I'm going back to doing business in Douglas. What I'm looking for is a consistency of our code. It sounds like we, clarify, confirm this for me, that we, the county, introduced code at a higher level, a higher standard, that perhaps, I won't say compromises, but changes the character area of this, this resort, of this planned development. Is that true?
Specifically as it relates to that emergency road, yes.
Okay, so, all right, so it's specific, so it's not broad. Okay, good. Second thing is that I heard you talk about a state standard. So is there a different standard for subdivisions as it is for resorts at the state? Clarify what you meant by that.
So the state standard is more specifically to the emergency access road. I can't speak to residential because I don't, that's not my forte there, but it's more specific as to how the distance from the rear of, we're all portions of the building. So if you're approaching the building, you have parking lots that front the building, and so there's easy access to get to it, especially with the height of the building. Then there are some roads on the sides. What is happening on the rear is that when you're walking out of the resort, you're, from the rear of the resort, you're kind of walking into the selling point of the resort. And under the state standards, that oval-shaped road, which has been designed in the rear, is designed according to state standards. So then things from a county perspective, I basically say, all right, that's the state standard, but the county standard is, is that that road has to be accessible along all sides of the facility.
All right, so I'm going to close my comment because I'm sure my peers will weigh in upon the thing that you brought to them. State standard, there's not that many resorts in this sort of metro area, right? Some of the things that you've been to, Lake Okoni, Chateau Long, Calhoun Gardens, et cetera, and of course, you've got Fox Hall. And a resort in my mind is not a subdivision, so it's sound, this is sort of equivalent to me, in my mind, three-acre minimums for everything throughout the county, right? Eighteen square feet, et cetera. So it sounds like this is a vanilla-flavor standard that's applied, and I think a resort in my mind is a little bit unique. Now, I'm only focusing on this one issue that I would, I would be okay with this particular point regarding public roads, is, and I want to make sure I get this right. If in fact, you're saying that you want to change, you don't want to conform to, you want to have an oval shape versus conforming to our requirement of, I guess, fire, my guys will weigh in, the team, I'm sure, regarding this, is that what we don't want to do is ever be in a place where we've got a fire, not heaven forbid. And my trucks, our brand-new equipment can't reach, or we don't have enough equipment to reach that hotel. That is, that is a standard that I cannot, that, I can't overcome that. I put a risk component on that one right there. So that's the only thing I looked at most of this, I'm like, yeah, I'm okay, but I need somebody to weigh in that says that, okay, if we go with your oval versus what we're requiring, and if my truck can't, one, get on that oval, or, two, its holes or its ladders, again, you guys know I'm not, that's not my specialty, but I can't accept a risk. So can somebody speak to the risk? Like, if I'm all the way out here, away from the side of the building, and I can't, I mean, am I putting the holes from the corners to this fire story? I mean, I don't know how high our ladder trucks go. I don't know what this means. I don't know how many we have. Can somebody answer just that one question?
And if I could add to that, because I definitely want them to be able to respond to that, the safety is a one-hundred-percent concern of the resort as well, is to ensure that, that every piece of that property is accessible, and especially from an insurance standpoint, they're going to make sure that that is the case as well. And so they want to do everything they possibly can to work with the county and staff to ensure that there is a plan that is amenable, that works from a safety standpoint. I think what we're, the main piece is, what is that solution outside of that road going completely around the building?
Can you ask, because I'm still not clear, is it the fact that the truck can't fit on whatever the dimensions is of the circle or the oval, or is it, it just doesn't get you close enough for that hole, is that how the pressure, I mean, I need to understand really what y'all are saying, please.
Yeah, yeah, for certain. And I believe it was a twenty-foot road that the oval is laid out to be, is that correct? It's a twenty-foot road, and I think the request has been made is that it be twenty-six-foot-wide road, and that twenty-six-foot-wide road be, like I said, along the building.
I have a question for our chief. Our chief?
My question needs to go ahead, Chief.
I think that's what you wanted, to talk about that road, and can the truck get in that space that you just mentioned, twenty-six-foot? Can the truck get in that space, our chief?
With a twenty-six-foot-wide road or a twenty-foot road?
Twenty-six is the standard.
Twenty-six is our standard.
Then you said twenty-six, right?
So twenty, is designed as a twenty-foot-wide oval, and I think there were, to what Chief Spencer's statement is, the standard is a twenty-six-foot-wide road.
And I think, Madam Chair, we've made some concessions. The fire marshal did on the road in the rear, so that it still gave the resort feel, but the base up under that area would support the ladder truck. So it would still look like grass, although there was access provided for the ladder truck. So we did make some concessions with that.
So is it wheat? That was the issue. So if you've made that concession, I'm fine. I guess, distance, holes, can we reach the top of the building? That's all I'm really trying to get at.
If we have access to the rear, we can.
You can reach it.
What the, what the state standard does, is the state standard...
We're probably going to need to, uh, get on camera. No, if y'all go up to me.
Sorry. Thank you, thank you. You don't get any. For those that don't know, this is Jay Williford. He's our fire marshal. When Scott Bishop retired, we recruited Jay. So Jay's our new fire marshal. Got years of experience with Carroll County, and so he's doing a great job for us, and we appreciate everything he does. Just a couple of points. Realize that the state code is the absolute minimum. Douglas County has chosen to go above that, and we've been very successful in that over the years, and we have, in my opinion, although it may be a little biased, I think we have increased the fire safety for our citizens out here by doing that. As far as this particular project, I'll let Jay speak to some of the concessions that have been made, but from a fire department operational standpoint, we need access to all four sides of any building in the event of a fire. As far as the height of our ladder trucks, we have a hundred-foot ladder trucks, so that's how high we can go. This is a five-story...
Five-story.
Yeah, five-story facility here, so our trucks could reach that from, like I said, as long as we had the access. From a fire department standpoint, of course, we always want access that allows us to do our job, and the concessions that Jay has already made as far as, our code actually says we have to have an all-weather access road.
Hard surface.
Hard surface.
Hard surface. And the code also states twenty-six feet wide, and from fifteen to thirty foot from one side of the building, allowing us to access one side of the building. The state minimum says, is basically for engine companies, not ladder trucks. It deals with engine companies getting in close, and it basically leaves the, leaves it up to the authority, having jurisdiction to determine, and it makes a gray area, really the state code makes a gray area for us. We've got it in black and white. We've got, we've got a code for that, and it's specific, and that's what we apply here. But we've said, you know, hey, we can disguise it, we can put grass on it, we can make it, you know, put facade around it, bushes, whatever, as long as we can access it. So...
So it's artificial turf, I mean, as you say?
The way, the way that some companies have done it, I'll take Google for instance, it's a, some make a fiber that mixes in with the soil and plant grass over, basically, and it's a hard surface that a truck can run on.
So that big old truck can, it will be fine, you can anchor, you can do what you need to do.
According to the architecture, or according to the design of the stuff, yeah. Basically, just mixes in the soil. And we've discussed several options. They even wanted, we even discussed benches in specific areas and, you know, bushes and things of that nature, you know, to dress it up, the architecture, to dress it up. I think the landscape architect was actually the one to come up with the design.
Right. I think, Madam Chair, I'm sufficient for what I need right now. You'll floor the rest of your...
Madam Chair, just to give some background information, on any normal development, these requests could not be brought to the board. They are not variable. In this development, when the master plan was approved, there was a section put in there about design deviations, so any deviations from the design, it says, has to be approved by a board commissioner. So that, that left an opening for the board to make decisions on these. Now, we did request additional information and more precise information a couple of weeks ago, and I think all we've received so far is what we've received as of now.
It seems like we are achieving our goals just by keeping everything aesthetically pleasing at the same time, so really, we've accomplished our goals, basically, with the, not a workaround, but it's just an adjustment that you made to keep the beautification in place. Is that what I'm hearing, basically?
We have, we're open, the code and the standard says a hard surface that will accommodate the weight of a truck. We're wide open on that, as long as we get, as long as we get our lane in there so we can access, we're open to anything as long as we can get access in there.
And as Commissioner Robinson pointed out, this truly is a life-safety issue as far as we're concerned, so that's why we're so adamant about it.
Any other questions, or we'll, the commissioners, you know?
So the road that you're proposing is how far away from the building?
Actual distance, I can, I can probably better show you than I can tell you.
Sorry, is anything, I think it's thirty-two feet is the maximum distance that has to be, if I'm, I mean, correct me if I'm mistaken, I think it's like thirty...
It's fifteen to thirty is the road that is the maximum distance.
That's what we require.
Yeah, that's what we require. I don't know how, how far is the road that y'all...
But what, how far is one piece of those?
I think the latest, greatest were within that thirty foot.
On our road?
Yes.
But now, your proposal road, how far is it?
I haven't been a part of that conversation.
Okay.
I mean, I think the big thing is that it doesn't hit every corner at thirty feet, you know, in other words.
And in the access road, it's not all four sides, it's just one side. It's just one side. And it's not all the way around, it's just one side.
I guess a point of clarification, that was to Howard's point and the point that was just made. So the oval itself is within the thirty-two feet of the building. The biggest concern was the, all the way at all, at all points of it, and I think that was where kind of the clarification needed to be made, was on that component of it.
Is it between the who and the river, or the building stack?
And my apologies, this is, this is the Ritz-Carlton. This will just use as an example. This is a fully, completely aerial of that. That was the best thing I could get up there as far as the visual goes. So there's no lake behind this one. It is solely just the open green space.
Well, to me, this is a lot to absorb in a work session, just off the cuff. It requires a lot of expertise, clarification, and I would like that we just tabled this at this time. Is there any reason that you could not table it at this time?
I believe that there are some, some solutions that I believe we could maybe talk with the fire marshal and Fox Hall on that maybe we could resolve today.
Well, why does it have to be, if it's so important, why are you just bringing it to us now at the last meeting of the...
That is, that is, that's an excellent question. It has taken us, to Mark's point, it has taken us a while to kind of get to this point. We've kind of gone down two different paths. Where we are right now at this juncture is the, the delay pushes construction and everything back, and we're at a critical point right now where we're trying to get it, get it complete, albeit it did take us a while to get to this point.
But a couple of weeks wouldn't be that damaging, I don't think, for such an important issue.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we, if we sign off on this and God forbid there is a fire, it could come back on the county too because of our, we deviated from our own code, so...
Sure.
I think we need to look at this more closely, talk with the fire chief and everything. This is a lot to absorb, just, and then vote on it tomorrow.
Please, I understand.
Had you come to us sooner and talked to us individually, that may have helped, but I'm just not ready to vote on it, and you're back.
Okay. Please, Madam Chair.
I'll start off with the concurrence of Commissioner Guyver. I guess I'm curious, number one, that the executive director of the Development Authority would be making a pitch on code variance and code changes, and the fact that you, that y'all have had to work through a lot of issues to get to this point over two, three, four weeks, we don't know, whatever the time frame, yet the expectation is the commissioners are going to come to a conclusion, you know, in twenty-four hours, or, you know, right now here today. I think that's patently unfair, to be honest with you. And I would like to table this and have more discussion, and there's a lot of changes in here. I'm seeing that sidewalks would not be required, as a, as a big, huge change to a development concept. So I would just like, I would, were to table this and have some more discussion with staff, the fire services and the development services. Now, you're back.
Okay. Any other comments, Commissioner Mitchell?
I'll just in closing. I've got several questions.
Yes, sir.
But there's no need for a question and Q and A now because it sounds like where we're going is to let us all digest and make sure kind of where we should or shouldn't be with this particular makeup, so I'll just, then to make this meeting longer, I'll just refrain from any questions, and I'll get back with you guys on some Q and A down the road, so I'll be there.
Okay. Well, has it wrapped it up? Anything else, Commissioner Robinson, before? Thank you so much. Good presentation, Ms. Ford. We would like to just take a look, deeper dive, and digest most of the items, all of those items, particularly, particularly one regarding the safety piece that we're calling, I believe you sound like you have something in place, a model, a workaround, and once we look at it and make sure that we've got it everywhere across the town for the citizens here in Douglas County, then we can go forward.
Yes, ma'am.
So it should, I would want to, with my board commissioners, to see if we could put it on the first agenda in January, that gives you... That gives you two weeks to look at it. And then we'll take a look at it again in two weeks.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much.
I believe that's fair. And then also, also, Mr. Pomprey, if you'd like, you could talk to each commissioner, like we typically do. If you wanted to talk to each one, so you can just lay out the plan so they can understand they have some specific questions.
We will do that.
Okay. And then we'll have it on our agenda in two weeks.
Thank you.
Ma'am chair, can we have access to Joe Fowler? I mean, I get, I appreciate our executive director of economic development, but I think this is so, the private side being talking to us, not this, but him.
Yeah.
I think he framed it well as far as a project, but there's some details that he shouldn't have to be in the middle of. I'm just, I'm just saying.
Okay.
Yeah, and to that point, we were, that was the game plan the whole time. Joe had a court case that had been had for two months and they set it for today at this very time. So he's in court right now.
Oh, okay. All right, we look forward to discussing this and we'll have it on our agenda in two weeks. But in that meantime, those 14 days, we need to make sure we pull all the pieces together, we need our authorities here.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much and look forward to talking about this in two weeks. All right, let's move on to the next item. The next item, we have a public hearing in its tab number four to amend the Douglas County Code of Ordinance, Section 30, uh, 3-70 pursuant to the recent passing of the Sunday Brunch Bill by voters regarding time requirements for the Sunday alcohol sales of Andrew Roberts.
Yes, yes, thank you, ma'am chair and commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning.
So the voters voted to make this change and that we require our ordinance to change. And that would be a decision that the commissioners would need to make. So it's, Section 370 and activate alcohol sales at 11:00 a.m. on Sunday. Any questions? Just hopefully I'll take it along.
Question for the board, it was pretty separate from anybody else. Your question, Commissioner Guyver.
Why does this have to be a public hearing if the voters are voting?
The voters simply approved by referendum the power of this board to implement the legislation. It's not been implemented until you change your ordinances. It'll go into effect if y'all decide to vote for it.
All right, any questions? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you so much for the presentation. We'll move on to tab number five, Resolutions to Adopt the 2018 Budget. Jennifer Holman, I believe you will present tomorrow. Do you have anything, Director Holman, do you have any comments?
No, ma'am, just Mark sent out the budget presentation as well as the comments, posterior comments, I believe on Friday, and I believe they're also attached to your agenda.
All right.
It's just a bunch of clarity. So tomorrow's, this is adoption meeting, this is not a public hearing. And what we're doing is reconciling, what are we doing? We're reconciling any changes that I've done since our last public hearing, is that?
I understand, true. We'll be discussing it as well, it's on the agenda for the county's theme this afternoon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have our business items, we'll move on. Tab number six, Authorization to Approve an IGA with WSA for installation of stormwater pipes under eight residential subdivisions of the cost of 50% of the estimated cost not to exceed $400,000 and authorized to chairman to sign all related documents subject to legal review. Mark Teal, County Administrator, County Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am, I was asked to give Gil to develop a M O U or an IGA with WSA. So essentially, WSA says that the estimated cost of the storm sewer, to replace a storm sewer in these eight or nine subdivisions is a little over $800,000. So what the IGA says is that the county will pay for half of that up to $400,000. So if it ends up being $900,000, we still pay $400,000. If it ends up being less than $800,000, we're going to pay half. So the most would be $400,000. And it's over a five-year period with the first year, first payment beginning in 2020.
Any questions from the board commissioners?
Ma'am chair, and I met with Gil just by happenstance this morning at the Chamber of Commerce. We have some proposed changes, but I think Mark has summarized the generality of what the agreement is. I did get, just so y'all know, not only is this an economic development issue, but the infrastructure benefits the public system. And so that's the key to your ability to be able to do this. And Gil concurd with that, that it benefits the public system. We've made some, a couple of changes and there are two lengths to go into. But the primary one is I subjected y'all's payment over the five years to the work actually being done. And also, there's a stay period if the work is not done. And then a closure period if the work is not done within the five years from January 31st of 19. But the talk, I don't think that's going to be problematic. We may have a little bit of different view on what the current stormwater management agreement says. But in essence, I think y'all can go forward on this based upon the public infrastructure, improving the public health, safety and welfare of the public. And Gil did concur on that. So they haven't seen our changes, but I think those will work out.
Essentially what this is, ma'am chair, it's your way of the... So these eight or nine subdivisions currently have, well, they're not subdivisions yet. They are pre-final plaque, there's no final plaque yet. They have corrugated metal pipes outside the rideaway. And WSA now requires concrete, reinforced concrete pipe. So WSA would dig up this corrugated metal pipe and replace those with reinforced concrete pipe.
Any questions from the board, Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, ma'am chair. And again, just to give context for the public that may be looking at this, listening to this for the very first time, this is dealing with the overall objective of getting rid of blight within the residential communities. We term this pipe farms. And the whole purpose was, okay, there's a stall in our growth. We recognize that perhaps our new growth, which obviously is predicated on both the commercial, industrial, inclusive of residential, perhaps could have been up to 2%, but it was a drag because we've got these communities that are incomplete. While we know that development is occurring here, and building is, we also recognize that there's a pause. And this is my point that I made earlier. Sometimes you don't want to over-regulate. I appreciate standards, but there should be an acknowledgement or at least a transition from the old to the new that allows things to keep moving. What you had were developers who were, and really, the small local developers, which Douglas County was built on, in case everybody forgot, was a small builder who actually built Douglas County to what it was. A lot of them went the way of extinction because of the recession. But it's one of those where, when you look at this, it was to give them a chance to open up regulations, turn regulations away so that people could come and do business and get rid of this blight that's dragging on your homeowners, your residents, the neighbors' property value. Look at it this way. If we complained about an empty house, this foreclosed, think about an entire pipe farm and the long-term effect of this pre-existing condition that needed to be addressed. This, and again, this is just for context and for the record. So the board of commissioners is actually considering this, coming alongside our water sewer authority to sort of deal with this particular situation. I supported this. This is something that we had at least two, I know, James, you guys were aware, at least two, the three meetings that I was involved in. I know there's a lot of sub-meetings. We know we had stakeholders, we had builders, we had realtors. We had bankers that were in the room that participated in coming up with the solution. But this is something that is necessary. We're trying to be an administration that deals with very tough situations. And I just want to show that I support this. I'm glad, and Ken, I appreciate you keeping this tight, making sure that legally this focuses on just this project. Our job is with this is not to sort of promote past errors or future errors, but just to deal only with this particular issue. So, and you're back, ma'am chair, thank you.
All right, any other questions, Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, just a couple. Ken, just for, make sure we clear, because I know there was a lot of conversation being had about WSA providing the pipes, labor, installing it and all this other good stuff at a cost roughly about $800,000, am I correct?
Yes, they estimate $800,000. We're capped at $400,000.
I got you, I got you. I don't want to exact, I just want to kind of make sure that that's what that all include. Because I know if you technically look at it, with the labor and all this other good stuff, it could have been a whole lot more, but they are putting it in themselves to offset.
No, I think they're contracting out. I think the total cost is $800,000.
Oh, got you, okay, okay. And if it's more than that?
We capped our contribution at $400,000 over five years.
Got you, okay.
So if it goes over, the way I have it written, they would assume the excess cost. Because they actually can control a little bit with in-house labor.
Yes.
And contracting out.
That's fine, that's fine. And the five-year period is that roughly about $100,000 per year that they're anticipating we pay WSA.
I think it was 80, it was around, we're upset about 80, I would say.
Got you, got you, that's okay.
2020. 2020.
Starting in 2020, in the five-year period of about roughly 80, 85,000, whatever that number is.
Let me make sure I'm right.
80, that's okay.
Yeah, the first payment, January 31st, 2020, and I put, provided the reimbursable costs have actually been incurred. In other words, for some reason, if that didn't go forward, we wouldn't make that payment.
Right, but until they've actually incurred the cost of building that. How many lots, I know we're talking about eight to nine subdivisions?
387 single-family units is what it's contracted. Now, I'm relying on data that was provided by them, so I don't, 387.
387, oh.
Eight subdivisions and 387 lots.
All right, so, and you'll get the clarity of, in writing, what that really all will entail. I'm assuming you got that so we can know exactly how many lots, not how many lots, our cost when we incurred this cost of roughly $80,000 per year for a five-year period to offset this $400,000.
Right. They'll have to submit, they'll have to submit something to Jennifer. The way it was originally structured, the cost just began in January, on January 31st of 2020 and for the next five years. We've modified it to say that provided that you've actually incurred the cost. And if you haven't incurred the cost, the payment stayed. But we've also put a cap that this has to be completed within the five-year timeframe or the deal expires. In other words, y'all want the economic incentive now, we don't want to defer it out. So we put incentives around them to get the job done.
So hopefully they'll get it all done within the five-year span so we can kind of make out payments and be done.
Right. My guess is the first deal, and this contemplates their first action, probably in March, because it'll take them two or three months to get all the necessary sign-offs and access rights and all that stuff.
So we anticipate them to go ahead and get this all done, really, because this is the infrastructure that they'll be putting in place, so they'll get that out the chute done in the first year possibly, you know?
Mark, do you know, I don't know if I can answer that.
That's the objective.
Right, but I can see them trying to piecemeal this per lot, per...
Yeah, because it's not per lot, per subdivision.
That's exactly right.
Technically, not subdivision yet, but...
Right, right.
But yes, their plan is to do all of them in the first year.
Got you. And last but not least, you said eight to nine subdivisions. Can we get a list of those subdivisions?
Yes, we can get a list, definitely.
Yes, so I'm just curious, I know a couple of them are, but I didn't realize it was eight to nine of them. But I can go back in that 2009 and 89, when it's kind of starting to occur.
And these are the last ones. So what happened was they built all the infrastructure.
Yes.
All the roads, storm sewer, water sewer, got that final plaque stopped.
Yep. And does any of these subdivisions fall in the city?
Not, there was disagreement, no. There was one, but I think they finished that subdivision. I mean, they replaced the pipes since there was one in the city.
Okay, because that's why my concern was whether or not this included those guys, but you're saying?
There's none.
Okay. So that particular one that you're speaking of, that was in the city, they've already replaced it through the city, whatever they agreed upon?
The developer finished that one.
Got you, okay.
All right, the developer.
Okay, all right. I'll leave it at that. You're back.
Move on to the next one. Thank you so much. Tab number seven. Judge Walker, Authorization to Renew the Contract of Business Information Systems in Corporation for the D I S Digital Reporting System Maintenance and DCI Software Assurance License for the Juvenile Courtrooms in the amount of $3,413. Judge Walker?
This is our annual update of our technical assistance agreement. We use electronic recording because we do not have access to court reporters. It's very difficult these days to get two court reporters. So we have one court reporter in one courtroom. We use the electronic system in the other courtroom. And this is just our annual maintenance agreement. It's always been in the budget, remains in the budget. But it is more appropriate for the board commissioners to sign that agreement than me because I really have no authority to do that.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner, back there.
Yes, Judge, you said something that turned a little flag in my brain here. Are you saying that you don't necessarily have a court reporter, they just transcribe from the tapes? Correct. So you can do that in any courtroom? I can't say what other courtrooms allow and don't allow because a lot of it depends on what's happened in terms of the adequacy of the record on appeal. We have no problems with being able to use electronic recording in most of our Chin's cases and most of our delinquent cases. We are still using a court reporter on dependency and termination cases because those records are much longer and much more complex. But they, you can alleviate, it seems like you're going down the road where we may can alleviate the need of a court reporter other than transcribing the transcript. That is the direction the field is moving in, is that the recordings would be electronic, but the transcription would be backward. I used to transcribe for a court reporter in my younger days. And they had to record it, and then I transcribed from there. So it went through two people, you know? So I can see this might save some money down the road.
Well, let me jump in, because juvenile court is a special breed and Judge Walker does a great job. What's different is that's a closed record unless it goes up on appeal, one thing. But number two, you know, in the state, in the Superior Court, for instance, simple cases, those court boards are being funded by the lawyers for the client, everything here. You have to provide it for criminal cases because it's, so they have a right to appeal or they have a right to a transcript. And what the clerk of court, unless they change the laws, doing, or, excuse me, the court board is doing, is certifying under oath that the words on this paper are the words that came out in that courtroom. What's different about this system is they just have to have some mechanism in these kinds of cases to prove what, that a hearing actually happened, that something happened and here's what, that it can go to. So the system is a little bit different right now. And while I agree, electronic, school board went to this a while back where they did the tribunals electronically rather than have a court board come. But the rules haven't been changed in Superior Court to change how that goes down in State Court. One, because of volume, and two, some of that load's being carried by the parties because they're having to split the cost of that court board sitting there. Otherwise, they don't transcribe. If you got a civil hearing this morning on a divorce or whatever, the court board is asking the people there, do you want this transcribed? And they have to make arrangements for payment. In a criminal context, they have to record everything in Superior Court, same with State Court.
But a digital record is...
I think this is a great system we all have, though, you know, it's a cheap cost. The bottom line is this, everything that occurs in juvenile court is at your expense. So this is saving y'all an expense in my mind rather than having a live person there.
All right, we'll move on to the next tab, tab number eight, Authorization. Thank you so much, Judge Walker.
Thank you.
Tab number eight, Authorization to Apply for the Continuation of Violence Against Women Act. Grant in the amount of $71,799 from the Criminal Justice Coordinating System and authorized to chairman to sign all necessary documents. Leon?
Yes, hey. Good morning. Good morning. This is a grant that we've had since 2014 and it goes to our domestic violence prosecutor. So we are required a 25% match, but we've had it since 2014, so we've been able to do that.
Any questions, continuation? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, tab number nine, Authorization to authorize a continuance of the temporary moratorium on acceptance of applications for the review of rezonings or acceptance of redevelopment or, should I say, development plans and issuance of development, special use and building permits for rock quarries and related uses until suggested code changes can be heard by the planning and zoning board on February 5th, 2019. Andrew Roberts, that was a mouthful.
Ma'am chair, thank you very much. Sorry that that item is so lengthy. I guess what we need to do here is actually extend this moratorium for 90 days in regards to letting, we have a P and Z meeting actually February 5th and also March 5th. And at either one of those meetings, they could, there's two code changes. The issue that we're having in making the changes is they're, the attorney that we're working with is having trouble finding some, an expert that can... we're working with is having trouble finding some, an expert that can weigh in on, on some components of the change. They had gone to the private sector, some consultants and things like that, tried to have, have that discussed, and they're having difficulty. So then, now they're looking at some colleges, professors, things like that, trying to get the appropriate.
Yeah, and let me kind of weigh in on that.
Sure.
The, the issue with that is this, the private sector is concerned about helping us on this, because then they would be conflicted out. I'm assuming private courts that pay them a lot more money. And so we're going to academia, because we have to have an educated, professional basis for what we're doing. Now, the agenda item says until it can be heard on February fifth, two thousand and nineteen, but I want to make it clear, the resolution is to extend the moratorium ninety days. It's our goal for it to be heard on February fifth, two thousand and nineteen, but the reason why we're doing it ninety days, if for some reason that meeting fails due to a natural disaster and we have to reschedule it, I want to make sure y'all know, y'all aren't extending to February fifth, you're extending it ninety days. But we're, our goal is to bring something to P and Z to pass over, recommendation to y'all at that meeting on February fifth, two thousand and nineteen. So we need to make sure that the resolu, that actual resolution says ninety days out, not February fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
Right, thank you. That's what I was going to see, make that change today. Good.
Any questions from the board? Sounds pretty self-explanatory. Thank you so much. Roberts, you have one more, tab number ten.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So we wanted to advertise for a public hearing to discuss the changes to our ordinance section three twenty-seven. This is to more align us with what the City of Douglasville does, and in, in regards to certifying the servers that serve alcohol. And so the proposed changes are behind me on the board. Basically, these individuals have to go, they have to go do the background check, and then they have to come downstairs and get their laminate, and then there's a RAS certification that we require, where the city does not, and that's an extra thirty dollars as well. So currently, the licenses, meaning the owners of the restaurants that serve alcohol, have to do, they pay for that sort of same certification every two years. So they're actually going and getting certified with the RAS, which is responsible alcohol sales and service training. So they're actually going through that and paying for that. And so this change would eliminate the need for the servers to have to pay for that, and instead would be able to do, like I said, what the City of Douglasville currently does, which is they take a written exam, and there's, they save some thirty dollars a year for that, for that change. So that's what we'd be doing, opening up the public hearing, not, not this time, but just advertising for it in, in the future.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Look like you have a question, Commissioner Bagley, and I can just kind of speak a little bit about the history of this. Some of our county restaurants that serve alcohol just, you know, kind of had questions why it can't be mirror the Douglasville policy that they have in place or their concept. So, and that was worth discussing, so I brought this to ma'am Roberts and asked her to look into it, see what we meant, whether it had an impact on our revenue, absolutely not. That thirty dollars will not, because we typically.
It goes to the, we have T R V and N V D, ma'am chair, that do the testing.
So.
So we're doing away with the RAS training, is that what it's?
No, it's, it's required, but not every year. Like the other employers, or should I say, other places in the county, those employers have been required to take, take the test every year. And the city, I believe, once you take it once, you're good. But the, the, I guess the manager or whoever, this is.
The owner, yes, the licensee.
They take the test every two years, right?
Yes, ma'am. So we'll, we'll, I guess we'll advertise for that then.
Okay, okay. All right, well, thank you. We'll move on to the next tab, tab number eleven. Authorization for EMS transport rate increase based on recommendation of the firing EMS committee.
Yes, ma'am. Our firing EMS committee have revisited our EMS rates for the last several meetings, and we have a recommendation that we increase our rates, and you should have it in your packet for a basic life support, ambulance trip. It would increase ten dollars for an advanced life support one, which is, it's based on the number of advanced procedures we do. So this, that would increase by fifty dollars. An advanced life support two, which would be additional procedures, would increase by seventy-four dollars. And then our overall mileage rate would increase by a dollar a mile.
Okay, any questions from the board commissioners? Chief, I'll go, Commissioner Bagley, who's the chairman of that firing EMS committee?
Chief, this is to bring it up to the surrounding counties, and more aligned with the surrounding counties.
What, what we're trying to do is get as close to the national average as we could, and we looked at that, and we're.
Then we looked at Georgia.
And then we looked at Georgia.
Yes.
This brings us up.
To back Georgia.
To Georgia.
Yes.
Standards.
So we didn't go all the way up?
No, no, we didn't go all the way up in the national.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Commissioner Bagley, just clarify that this would be Georgia standards. She's the chairman of the firing EMS committee, and also, I have just one question, is my understanding that this is just so we could make sure that from a reimbursement component from the insurance companies, not, would it, would it have an impact on our citizens? Could you talk about that, that they have to pay more, or is this for reimbursement purposes from the insurance carrier?
It's mainly from insurance.
Okay, just to make sure they understand.
The, and I talked with finance this morning, confirming what we had, the, the numbers that our A M B had given us, or the folks that do our collections for us, and based on the payer mix, and the, which they were based on the national average rates, the, the estimated revenue would be about seventy-four thousand dollars a year, but that's going to be plus or minus, depending on the payer mix, which can change, you know, from, from month to month. So it, it will, it will help us some.
Okay, any other questions? Vice Chair Robinson?
Yeah, this, this is general question, so on average, how many, and I know this is probably right with the corner, you don't know, volume goes over time, but on average, how, how many trips do we have per year?
We are on average for this year to have about seventeen thousand calls countywide. Eighty percent of that seventeen thousand will be EMS-related.
EMS-related, all right.
Realize too, that we can only charge if we transport.
Only we.
So there, there are a lot of those calls that we go out on and we don't transport, so there is no charge.
Oh, so if you just show up and I've got some type of high blood pressure, you stabilize me, right? I mean, just whatever.
Right.
All right, that's the first question. So Director Hallman, how much money does this generate for us in general?
Blink the estimate. Michelle, you want to talk, do you mind talking about this?
My bad.
Good morning. There are a number of factors, depending on the type of transport, the type of insurance an individual has. What the, our billing company did is they looked at a year's history of our payer mix, whether it was Medicare, Medicaid, or, or private insurances, or self-pay, and they estimate if we went to the national average, it might yield as much as seventy-four thousand dollar increase a year. That could go up or down with that payer mix, and because we are coming slightly lower than the national average, it may be a little less than that.
So an increase of seventy-four thousand, and maybe you said in your open comments, and I just blinked, but how much does it generate today? Seventy-four thousand is the increase?
It's the increase.
Going to this amount?
Yes.
All right, so what is the amount today prior to going to this increase? How much do we generate?
Oh. Two point one million, is it?
Say again, please.
Two point one million is what we. Okay. And then the seventy-four thousand dollars is a projected cash increase. Our revenue may be more, but because of uncollectibles, the seventy-four thousand was a cash.
No, I appreciate that, Bill. That's what I want, I was trying to get more of a magnitude. You've answered the question, but you're back.
Michelle, could you just respond a little more about the, that reimbursement component that's from the insurance carrier, so to allow the citizens to understand that it will have a minimum, minimum impact on them? Because we, I don't believe we've been, been reimbursed on, or paying what we should pay, I guess, for these trips. Can you explain it a little more? Help me.
Well, the impact to an individual would vary with their insurance, where they're at with meeting their deductibles, and what type of, how their plan covers. The majority of our transports, however, are Medicare, Medicaid, and they won't be affected by this at all, because we're a Medicare provider. We accept what Medicare pays, and then there is no balance bill to the individual.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Good job.
Good job.
Just one comment, and just remember that any additional revenue or revenue we get, we receive from ambulance fees is a direct impact, positive impact, if it goes up through our general fund. Because of service delivery, we take the firing EMS funds budget, we divide it by two, half of that gets funded from the general fund, less what we collect in ambulance revenue. So if we collect in more revenue for ambulances, that's less of an impact to the general fund.
Excellent. Good job. Again, good job.
Thank you. Thank you, firing EMS committee. That's great. All right, next, Chief, you have tab number twelve. Tab number twelve, authorization to purchase the superior software upgrade for the MACH alerting system for the digital radio system in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars to be funded through the twenty-sixteen loss bonds, as recommended by the firing EMS committee. Chief Spencer?
Yes, ma'am. This has to do with the new eight-hundred radio system. In order for the fire stations to be alerted from this new system, we need this software component that ties into the current CAD system. There's a lot of work that goes in to making sure all the streets are in there, that they are pronounced correctly. And so what our nine-one-one center has asked us to do is get this approved, so they can go ahead and start doing their part of the work on this system, so that when the, the whole system comes online, we'll be ready to go.
Any questions from the board, Commissioner Bagley?
I just wanted to point out, Chief, the radio system is under budget as of right now, even with this addition here. Do you want to elaborate on that? About the figures, about, is it about five hundred thousand?
Off the top of my head, Commissioner, I, I don't remember. It, it's a significant savings, though, not, you know, saving, we are under budget.
And you also went to Chicago?
Yes, ma'am.
And tested the system, and?
We, we did. We went the, a week or so ago, and the system tested out fine. Myself and Director Mill Holland, we signed off on the test. We met with all the technicians up there, we actually saw our radio system working. We, we sent pictures to David to put on the website. It was very, very impressive. We were super excited about it. I, I was a little nervous signing, because it was like seven and a half million dollars we were signing, so, but it's, it's all good, it's all good.
But just to recap, the, the radio system was necessary that, so public safety, that means the fire department and the sheriff's office, and this, that they could communicate with other surrounding counties, and that they would also, if you had to go into a house, say in Fair Play, oftentimes you, under the old system, you were losing connection with the people on the outside, so you couldn't communicate in a burning building. This will allow better communication.
Yes, ma'am. This, this.
And safety.
The contract calls for ninety-five percent countywide coverage, ninety-five percent of the time in building. So that's the average. So we expect we will have higher than that, but, but it will not be lower than that, or they will not have met their contract obligation. So we're very excited about that, and that's a great point. When I send my guys in a building, if I can't talk to them and something happens, then.
Same way with the sheriff's office.
And the sheriff's office is the same. The other thing this system allows us to do is communicate between departments, both in the county and outside the county. It's a very complex system, and I feel like we've been working on radios for about the last year.
And the new towers are going up as we speak.
We have three towers that have, or four towers that have already been completed, the one at nine-one-one, the one at Fire Station Five, which is Chapel Hill, Fire Station Eleven, which is ninety-two north. The Bellard Ballpark was completed on Friday, Jason. And the next one that will be completed by the end of this week will be at Fire Station Eight out of Mary Lake. The rest of them will, they'll start building on after the first of the year, which will be the Osteo Gas System down in Lithia Springs, the Factory Shoals side, as we call it, off Shoals School Road. And then the, the last site we have to acquire is in the Fair Play area, and that's been worked on there.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bagley. Vice Chair Robinson, you have comments?
Yeah, just, just a comment, so, and again, just hear, hear, hear the context, and hear the heart of what I'm saying. Again, I'm listening to the numbers. We have, it sounds like we, I think, great project, definitely need it, because I'm following the money. And I, I go back to, in some extent, in some parts of this SLOST, we underestimated what costs were. And in certain cases, perhaps we overestimated, all right? It's all relative, all right? And as I look at this excess, that, these savings, and whether it's, it's, it's true or not, in other words, or the savings is a saving, because that was sort of what we set aside, all right? I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking about, we spent, think about, it, it, we've, we've got to just do better in our estimation, so that, you know, we get into this adoption of the budget. So if I take ten million dollars out of my general fund to pay for some land, I spend a hundred million dollars on the jail's purpose lost, which is hard cost, another twenty million dollars just for additional costs such as consultants and so forth, I add another twenty million dollars, right? And, and so I'm looking at this, and I'm sitting here, and I'm like, okay, but I can't use the excess of that to go get cars, that impacts my general fund, that prohibits or puts a constraint on salary increases, pensions, et cetera, right? The general fund is sort of a scarce place, right? It's something that you should protect, and it should, it should be, it's your bloodline, it's the thing that you need to really make sure that it's legal. When you have a SLOST, I, I think that the SLOST is like capital, it allows you to go do some heavy lifting. Thank you, General Assembly, for creating that type of funding source. I really appreciate it. But this is just for the record, for those who, those who will sit at this seat, at this table in the future, that they recognize that, okay, don't, don't so narrowly define things that you bet everything on this one part of nothing, right? It, it needs to be inclusive, not exclusively only this. I understand it's important, it's a priority, but I'm looking at the spin, and I'm like, and I get it, I'm just, I'm cringing, because it's like, ah, it, it bothers me that we didn't have additional capacity to pick up some of these other things. So it's just something that, again, while, guys, I celebrate it, I, I appreciate the good work, I appreciate the due diligence, I appreciate all of that, but at the same point, it's not either or, it's like, we also have to recognize what we could not do. So just for the record, Ben, to your, I yield.
Okay. All right, I'll move on to, thank you so much, Chief. All right, tab number thirteen, authorization to accept reimbursement of the Georgia Environmental Protection Division, having this waste trust bond in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and twenty-five cents, and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Jenkins, I thought I saw you earlier. Oh, there you are. Oh, there you are.
Good morning. I guess I still want it?
Yes.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, we do this about five years. There is a fund that the state EPD sets up for various tasks, scrap tire fund, maybe, cleanup of hazardous waste sites. In this particular situation here, we monitor groundwater, we monitor methane at our landfill. And if it has just a minute amount of constituents, it's not exactly right, it doesn't pass the test, then we can get reimbursed. And it typically runs, in this particular case, this one's $37,000. It has been up as high as $50,000 or $60,000. So it's a great program. What we hope for is they don't use it for something else, like toll roads and that kind of stuff. But I see it in a nutshell, asking for that and for Madam Chair to execute it. There is a resolution. Don't require a hearing or anything, just requires signatures of the district commissioners as well as Madam Chair.
Any questions for the Director Jenkins? That is pretty self-explanatory. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Move on to tab number 14. I don't see, Director.
I'm Director.
Oh, there you are. Thank you. Thank you, Director Holman. Authorization to amend the Board of Elections budget to cover elections expenses for the runoff election revenue for the portion of these expenditures to be paid by the cities of Douglasville and Villarica. Director Holman?
Yes. As you know, we had a runoff, and so with that, there's additional expenses that occurred. We are going to be billing the city of Douglasville just under $20,000, and the city of Villarica will over $6,000. So the net impact to our general fund is just under $50,000. Milton, you couldn't be with us today, so he just asked that I bring this before y'all and ask to amend this budget for this runoff.
Okay. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Mulcahy?
Yeah, it was recent HCPG Board of Managers meeting, and it continued to be one of their initiatives to modify our runoff requirements to what is typical across the United States. We're one of, we're one of a handful of states that requires a 50% plus one limit on electing someone to office. And they're going to run back at the General Assembly and see if we can get that modified, that whoever gets 45% or, that will save the counties and cities a lot of money across the state. How do you feel about that?
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Mulcahy. Thank you, Director Holman. I'll move on to the next item. Tab number 15 is already covered. Tab number 16.
Madam Chair, may I just say something about 15? The way it's written talks about roads. There are some design standards that they're looking to have variance from that are not what was discussed strictly, and some of which I have no issue with, some of which I do. So as it moves forward, I'd like the opportunity to have it.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Director. All right, next, we'll move on to tab number 16, authorization to renew professional services agreements and MOU for services for the state for DUI, drug court, and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents.
Good morning, Mrs. Rogers. Good morning. These are just, all of these PSAs and MOUs, there's two MOUs. One is for our counselor, that is Ascension Counseling and Mental Health. That has not changed other than a 4% increase in the fees that we're paying. Most of those fees are paid through date funds and or grant funds, and some participant fees as well. The PSAs are for our people that come in and collect the urine screens for us in the morning. Those remain essentially the same with a slight increase in their fees as well. There is a new MOU for a new lab that we're using. They're called EverHealth or otherwise known as EverTest LLC. They are, they're saving us money in the long run for our drug screening. Those are also paid through grant funds and date funds if they need to be supplemented, so they don't affect the general fund. EverHealth has, we're all electronic now, so the chain of custody's and the requisitions are unquestionable in a court if there's anything that needs to go to court. So it's, it's really been a good change. The staff is very excited about it. And like I said, overall, it's saving us money in the long run. So those are good things. So if you have any, I mean, I've got copies. I believe Legal has them all. I've sent them all to Miss Moore for them to look at to make sure that there's nothing that needs to be changed in them. But again, these are all, other than EverHealth, the other four are all the people that are still currently working for us this year. Y'all approved them last year, and I, it's my understanding that I have to come back every year with a new contract, so that's why I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Gray? Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Y'all have a merry Christmas.
And you too. Thank you. Tab number 17, authorization to adopt the 2019 state and federal legislative agenda. Director Stanley?
Good morning. Good morning. So before you today is the 2019 state and federal legislative agenda. This document, as long as, as well as the other information, was presented to our state legislators on November the 30th. And the document includes 15 state legislative priorities. 14 of them are listed in your book, plus an additional legislative priority that was added by Commissioner Mitchell. So we have 15 of those. I don't know if you guys want me to go over them in detail in the interest of time, but we're just asking to adopt the state and federal legislative agenda in order to move forward this year in the, at the Capitol.
Any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Vice President Robinson, you have comments?
Yeah, so all we're doing is just passing a resolution of adoption. That's in your, in that sense.
Yes.
There's no action to be taken by us. So what comes out, just for the record?
Sure.
We passed this resolution, these items, and what does the state do, just for the record?
Sure. So pretty much what this is, it's like the playbook for the county or my legislative marching orders. When I go down to the county, I'm sorry, to the Capitol, and when I go to DC, these are the things, are the things that the county is, will be pushing as priorities. So it simply just gives, it lets our legislators know that these are the things that are important to the Board of Commissioners and to Douglas County, and any bills or legislation that would fall within those categories, they already will know that those are things that the county supports or we don't support.
And just for clarity, so when our local delegation met with us, we talked about the county's priorities, this is really just the Board Commissioners' priorities?
That's correct.
Because there are other priorities that may come out of other constitutional officers, other jurisdictions, et cetera. Is that accurate?
That is correct. And one of the things that I do when I compile this book, I do reach out to all of our constitutional officers and all our department heads to get their input. So a lot of what they ask for is similar to what's in the book, but they, some of them do have their own separate priorities, as well as the city of Douglasville and the Board of Education. But they all have given me copies of that, so we can just kind of have everything together.
I just want to clarify, this is just what the bottom of us are interested in?
Yes.
But it is not to constrain the thoughts and desires and needs of the others.
That's correct.
Madam Chair, you have. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? I'll move on to the next one. Thank you so much, Director Stanley. And I must add, a lot of the items that you have, we have the 2018, were accomplished in 2018.
That's correct.
So thank you for standing your wings for us at the Capitol. Tab number 18, authorization to accept the Keep America Beautiful, Duracell Nine-Volt Battery Grant. Can you tell us a little bit about this?
Yes, ma'am. So back in August, Keep America Beautiful and Duracell had a grant where they were offering nine-volt batteries to the community. I did apply for the grant, and we were awarded 92,400 batteries. This will be beneficial, this will be beneficial to the Douglas County community, because if you go in any store, these batteries, just for two of them, they're like $7.67. So they average about $3.75 a battery. So this would be a benefit to the Douglas County community of over $340,000. I've been working with our fire department. We will be packaging the batteries and giving them out in sets of threes like this. Keep Douglas County Beautiful has a host of activities planned for next year in order to be able to give these batteries. We have, actually, we'll be having a battery replacement event in February, where we'll be exchanging batteries. We have some cleanup scheduled for March and April, where we will also be offering batteries. And also in January, we'll be partnering with Home Depot and the landfill. And we'll be, people will be able to bring their Christmas trees, and we'll be giving them seeds and batteries in return. So we just ask that you guys accept this grant so that we can give these batteries to the community.
Is it 90, you said 92,000?
It's 92,400 batteries.
Okay. Commissioner, you have comments?
Yeah, just, okay, I can't even, where are any batteries at?
They're in the, they're in the bottom of the building right now. We just got them about, I want to say about two weeks ago, maybe.
All right, no, I just, okay, so we got, there's literally 90,000 batteries. How many homes do we have in the county? 15,000, 60,000? I'm just trying to get a order back.
Well, I'll, well, I will say this, Commissioner Robinson. We're going to give them out three at a time, and Keep Douglasville Beautiful was also awarded about 36,000 batteries. And I received a call from Deputy Chief Zachemeyer last week saying they've already given most of those out. There is a demand for these batteries. So we definitely have people who want them.
All right. So again, just trying to recognize that everybody doesn't follow us, everybody doesn't get, you know, we've got 15,000 people part of our What's Happening email distribution. There's always people who just are not in the mood. And I want to, whether it's through stores, everybody got to go to grocery store. A majority of people have what we want to call children go to school, right? I'm trying to figure out, okay, how do we really get these out? And are they only used to be used for smoke detectors, or are people getting them for toys? And what's the purpose?
The purpose is for smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, I believe. But if, I mean, you can use them for, I guess, anything that a nine-volt battery will be, can be used for.
Just for clarity, just for the record, 90,000 is just not come get a graph to sort of replenish.
Right.
It really had a purpose, and I just wanted to drive home that point. And just trying to see, if you've got 120,000 batteries, just 50,000 houses here, I don't know how many apartments, I was just trying to get a feel for how much coverage would that be? But I, I think I got what I needed. I'm good. Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair, if I may, and I normally don't talk at this point, but if there is excess batteries, I can tell you, one of the biggest needs at Operation Christmas is these kids getting toys, and they don't have batteries. And a lot of people that donated toys take batteries to them. But if there becomes excess that's just sitting, I'm sure the health squad would love to put those in kids' toys, whether it be this year or next year. But just that there's excess, I know it has another purpose potentially, but if it becomes, if they're going to get wasted, let us know.
These are not enough.
Well, some toys, not all. Most of them are seeds or these, but we can't take 90,000 nine-volts because most things, but, you know, nowadays, these, what do you call those things that hover?
Drums.
Some drums, boys and I can take the nine-volt. The smaller children-type drums, I'm not talking about winds that fly around here with planes and stuff. But there might be a need for some of the batteries if y'all have, if there's going to be lost.
Are you still taking donations to...
We're not advertising it, but we are taking donations some.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Thank you so much, Director Stanley. I appreciate his 90,000 batteries because we are really lucky. Some counties applied for these batteries and didn't get them. So we did secure this grant, so thank you so much.
And we have had offers from other counties. If we don't use them all, Cobb County specifically has asked to get our excess. So a lot of counties didn't receive the grant, but they have definitely been watching our batteries in case we don't use them. So thank you, Chief, for helping us.
Good job.
All right, we'll move on to the next item. Tab number 19, authorization to award the bid for concrete materials to Wayne Davis Company for the period from January 2019 to December 1, 2019. Director Pecot?
Yes, ma'am. We submitted a request for bid. We received one response back, and that was from Wayne Davis, our local concrete contractor. And their prices increased by about 5% over the prior year. They were our prior year vendor as well. So we're just recommending that you accept the prices from Wayne Davis for concrete for next year.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I can move on to the next one. Tab number 20, authorization to approve an increase in architectural and engineering fees to be paid to Cardinal Watkins Associates Incorporated in an amount of $90,502 due to the increase in size and scope of the new Douglas County Senior Center in Lithia Springs, and authorize the chairman to sign all documents subject to legal review. And this is a revisit from our last work session. Director Pecot?
Yes, ma'am. The senior center footprint and the services and the structure itself has changed fairly dramatically from what the original scope was. And because of that, I think there's, Mark, how much is the additional expense over the initial cost?
5% of that amount is $90,502.
Okay. So there's an amount of money that's, that has increased from what the initial cost estimate was. And so now we, we are recommending that the county accept the fact that the fees should be increased for the architect that's working on the, on the project so that he can do all of the swimming pool engineering and design, as well as the different other facilities that have been added to what the original footprint was for that building. So we're recommending that the county approve this fee increase.
Any questions from the board? Vice President Robinson?
Yeah. So this is a recommendation from the committee or just something that was just brought forward?
It's a recommendation from the Parks and Rec.
All right, all right. Just, so, so, and I, again, when I heard the scope creep, it was added for this footprint, which I'm good with. And I think boundary waters, but that was different than this one, because this is a deliberate, we want to expand it to meet the needs of the people. So the design increases by 5%, so I'm assuming that, or relatively, I'm okay with whatever the number is, which means perhaps the cost of construction will increase relatively based on that? I mean, is that the logical logic?
Mr. Till can give you the...
Well, what happened was, in the original square footage was like 14.5 or 14 that they, that they submitted. It was included in the RFP.
Yep.
Was a result of the community meetings. So there was some additional space that was added. I think now the facility is around 18,000 square feet, so the cost hasn't been increased based on the bigger size.
Okay, so community input. Okay. I'm just following the logic. So community input that gave validation for this increase, and the committee is comfortable with that, right?
Yes, sir.
Do we understand what the estimate is? This is for the design, though, right? This is for him to finish.
This part is for the design.
Just the design, the engineering.
Total cost of the project, including design, contingency, everything is still under, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just an estimate. We haven't gone out and figured.
Now, that's okay. This was just for design. I'm fine. For you.
Okay. Commissioner Guyer?
I'm going to say something, and I know it will go through over some people's ears, and some people don't want to hear it. But the way this splash with the Parks and Rec has been handled, it appears as though this Board of Commissioners has abandoned half of this county. Nothing from Chapel Hill Road West is being funded, according to Mark. They will run out of funds before, probably before they finish Bellard. You got Bellard, Fair Play, Post Road, and Winston. Y'all are getting the Cadillac, and we're getting nothing, is what it appears to the public in the fourth district. And when I say the fourth district, you know, it includes Mirror Lake, Fair Play, part of the city of Douglasville. The mall is in my district. And y'all are asking people to buy local, yet when they see something like this, they're saying, why? Y'all have abandoned, y'all are spending all these splash funds for Parks and Rec on the western side of the county, getting the very best. You're getting not just in the youth center, you're not getting just one basketball court, you're getting two. In the senior center, you're getting now an indoor pool that's going to cost from, from here at this point forward, once the pool is built, it's going to cost the taxpayers of this county. I'm ashamed of this board for what you're doing. I'm ashamed of y'all. Y'all have completely ignored the necessary replacements or repairs to the parks on the western side of the county. to the parts on the western side of the county. And when I say the western side of the county, it's almost half the county. Because, uh, y'all are just putting all the funds and you're doing it the Cadillac side. You're, you're giving the very best, the most expensive, and leaving nothing, absolutely nothing for the people that's having to pay for this. Shame on you, and that I yield.
Any other comments from the Board of Commissioners?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Robinson?
Just the interview here. I'll, I'll, I'll be sensitive, yeah, I'll be good. But, but she brings up a good point. It, it goes hand in hand. It goes back to priority of, of perhaps administration. My citizens made it clear during my public hearing, uh, usually with Transportation and Economic Development, the past seven years, but I actually tracked them, I asked them. This year, they actually went with Parks and Rec, uh, as being a priority and community development, um, specific to public health, which is consistent with, with, again, I'm just one road district too. But to your point, think about administration, it's about policy. If the prior administration just only wanted to put everything in one thing, public thing, think about, um, national defense, that was your priority. Now we're swinging it back a little bit the other way to say, okay, but what about the people? Right? So I, it, it's, it's an ebb and flow. So I appreciate the, the commentary. I mean, it's okay, I, I'll, I'll accept that. But, but it's a balancing act, right? We're not ashamed of the fact that, okay, well, what did you do during that period of time? That was my whole premise of laying out, like, think how we spent the money. General fund, seventeen million to seven million cash to buy some land in the jail. Right? You could've took some of that and did some of the things you talked about. Right? So you, you gotta, you gotta step back sometime and say, okay, let's look at what we really did. It can't just be convenient about what the other side has done all of a sudden. Right? What, what contributed to, 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 to the current state of Parks and Rec? Right? There's a balancing act. It's about having a, a balanced appropriation of funds. I'm okay, I'm for defense, I'm for public safety. But not all eggs in one balance, uh, one basket. And this box leases balanced, it's spread out. And so I won't belabor it. I, 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 I think you get my point, which is, yeah, I hear you, but to duly note it, but we, we, we recognize that. You have a committee structure, right? Everybody gets to weigh in. Uh, you can always, you know, if you wanna override some, go find you three votes, go find two more. But, but in the meantime, it's just like, but there, there is input. I, I get it. Right? Um, but, and I, I don't, yeah, let's just leave it at that, Madam Chair, I yield.
I'm gonna move on to the next item. All right, we'll move on. Um, the next item we have is tab number twenty-one, authorization to award a contract to the Intercontinental Commercial Services Incorporated for professional janitorial services for the, uh, Douglas County Courthouse for a total annual cost of sixty-three thousand dollars. And authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. And this is another revisit from our last work session. Director Peacock?
We're, we're gonna ask that this be tabled, or not tabled, but pushed to the next, um, agenda session. The plan is that we're going to, um, meet with the top four submitters to determine, uh, to make sure that the, the, the pricing is correct and that they're in, they are in, uh, in fact able to provide the services.
Okay, thank you for that, I think.
Madam Chair? Doesn't our process address that, though? Aren't, aren't they giving requirements here, you're gonna do A, B, C, D, E, and F? And then they respond to how they're gonna charge the county for doing A, B, C, D, and F?
Yes, sir.
So what is this, why are we doing this meeting?
It's at the request of the commissioner.
I'll tell you why I asked the question. Let me, let me speak to it.
Please do.
This price is a little low, um, compared to what we had in previous years. Uh, we've used, it's been hovering about a hundred and three thousand per year for the, this janitorial contract. This contract has come in at sixty-three. It sounds good, it may be too good, it, it, it sounds so good, it may be too good to be true. So therefore, I wanted to deep, take a deeper dive, Commissioner Mitchell had some concern in our last meeting. And we just said, well, you know, let's just look at all four, the top four, and go from there and make it fair. But since sixty-three now, we just hate for this person to say we can't do this for sixty-three thousand. Because usually these cleaning, cleaning projects are based on square footage. And if you, uh, look at the square footage of this courthouse, a hundred and eight thousand is reason, is typically what it typically should come in at. One, a hundred and eight thousand, not sixty-three thousand. So I'm just wondering what calculation this person used or what have you. You may wanna speak to that.
What has been factored into this is the fact that, that the cleaning service is no longer being required to clean the ass- the, the old assessor's space, nor the tax commissioner's space. So that's not being, that's not in the square footage that's being covered by the, the, the new contract. So the square footage has been reduced because the service will not be, um, cleaning will not be done in those two, two spaces within the, within the courthouse.
Commissioner Mitchell, do you wanna weigh in a little bit with, you know, with this concern? Okay, I can see. Commissioner Guyer, I can see.
Okay, um, who's gonna clean those areas?
Well, they're not being cleaned because they're not being used.
And I know, but they're gonna be used, so that this contract does not cover all of the courthouse?
It does not cover those two locations. Now, once they're back, um, functioning in, in use, uh, then yes, they'll have to be cleaned. We'll have to modify the contract. But we don't wanna pay today.
But did, did, did the people that bid on this, did they know that?
The, the square footage was given to them.
So they, they bid on square footage?
It's based on square footage.
This doesn't look good. You know, we put it out to bid. We had responses, what, five bidders?
Six, I think. Yeah.
Five or six bidders. We went with the low bidder. I don't, I don't see what the question is.
But I didn't realize that you, you just mentioned there's a couple of areas that were not incorporated. And that's, I probably, that had come out earlier, that would make more sense. Because some of them, you don't have all the square footage in there. Because I understand the calculation for that square footage for courthouses, and the square footage of this courthouse, I believe, is, is it twenty thousand? What is the square footage of this courthouse?
It's more than that, I believe, but, but again, we don't do a lot of cleaning on the court side either. This cleaning service wouldn't because they're not allowed past a certain point. Uh, so our night cleaning folks clean that. So again, there's a limited amount of space over, even on the court side, that this cleaning service is gonna be taken care of.
So this contract does not, does not cover all the previous square footage that you had in the other contract? So you said we would have to go in and just amend it once we incorporate those in. That wasn't clear earlier, so does that give you some clarification, Commissioner Mitchell?
Well, absolutely.
That makes sense now. I'm like-
I agree. Not knowing that that was included, that's why I asked, is, is, is everything included? However, as Commissioner Guyer stated, though, not to include where the tax commissioner thinks it, that's gonna need to be cleaned. So I think we need to kinda take a holistic look at the entire square foot- feet that we're gonna be dealing with versus what we're not. And we're gonna come back and get that done later. Because once they get, once we build out, whether it's security or however we build this thing out, we still don't have a clean whomever go in that particular space. So to me, I would think you would have it all inclusive to make sure that they know that they will be cleaning that in the future, but.
They do know that.
Oh, okay.
We just don't want to pay for them.
I get it.
Today, while it's not in use.
I, I get it. I, I get that part of it. And, and, and maybe my numbers wouldn't have came up so drastically different, and I probably wouldn't have had this kind of conversation. But I didn't know all of this didn't exist. So, so now it might make a little more sense once I go back and do the math versus what I thought in the beginning as to the math just was too far off.
Yes, sir.
So.
I did bet it was given the same square footage to bid on.
Yes, ma'am.
I know you said it was given the same square footage, but it wasn't the same as, as previous contract because. So, and I, I was still thinking one way.
I'm gonna go back and, and verify that point because, because Mr. Mark Price actually put that number in the, the RFP. And I don't have it here in front of me, but I wanna make sure that, that everybody got the right number. But did they get the full number or the reduced number? That's what I don't, I can't one hundred percent speak to.
Yeah, let's make sure.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm listening to you. Again, so it doesn't matter if I, if the number's twenty thousand or fifty thousand. They all should be relatively the same. It's all relative. Right? And so when I'm looking at the scope of this, I'm like, okay, it's forty, I mean, it's, it's off. It's so low. And, and so I go back to quality. Low doesn't equal quality. I'm gonna bring up right before you guys, the class two thousand and ten came aboard, or right, right around that period of time, Lithia Springs Park. Remember this? And we went with the low bid because we were trying to save money. We, we, I remember Ken, you had to get involved and learn, I, I got to know Ken about getting involved with bonds and stuff to make them fix that. Because we, 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 we gave this contract to somebody just so, well, it's gonna save us money. I get it, but it, it didn't fulfill what we needed. Right? And we knew it was low, but we went with, well, it's the low bid. And I'm like, I, I'm not gonna live that experience. So this, to your point, this has to be validated. I don't just have to accept a low bid if I question, is it gonna get what I need done? That's our whole job. I don't wanna be on the other side of this and now I have to go back in to your point. Now we gotta redo another contract, a smaller contract, pick, like, no. I, I mean, so I, I think the questions are legit by, 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 by my peers to pause, to ask that question. Right? To, 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 to just be comfortable and be, be clear. So to your point, I'm listening to it from the last time to this time, um, much clearer responses from, um, Director Peacock. I got it. But there's still a part in this that says, well, we ain't got a shotgun, nobody, I mean, we wanna get it done. But, but, I mean, again, sometimes you got, you got five, ten minutes coming here and, and make a compelling argument. And sometimes we, we pause because, okay, something's just not right. Trust our gut. That's our whole point, it's our discretion, like, hmm, something's not right. And the answer keeps, keeps coming clear along the way. It's like, okay, it's moving, it's moving, it's being justified along the way. And so, I mean, rarely does this happen. We make a lot of decisions. I mean, a lot of decisions. So again, every now and then, we, we get something that comes along here, that you pitched along here, we grab hold of it and say, huh, I don't know about this. It doesn't challenge the process or the person or any of that. It's just, well, just on this transaction alone, we just, we're not comfortable. We don't have to feel bad about it, it's just, well, not quite. So I, on this one, I'm, I'm not certain I wanna move forward yet, but I'm, I'm, as I've learned, I'm, I'm unsettled about going on this right now until we get clear, so.
But, Madam Chair, but do you want to add some more comments or just not?
You can add some more comments. What I wanna do, so you know, I just wanna be able to wrap it up. And you said you'll go back and verify that it's based on that, uh, reduced, uh, square footage.
I spent a lot of time with the, uh, executive vice president for the company, the vendor that's been recommended, Mr. Kelly Adamson. Uh, his corporation is a huge corporation. They do a lot of different things. He has a thousand, he said, contracts like this for cleaning services across the country. So he, he believes, and he assured me that he could do the work that we're asking to have done for the amount of money that he's offered. Having said that, you know, I don't have any, I can't give a hundred percent guarantee that that's true, but that's what he told me. We also checked all the references of the top four companies. Uh, the company that we're recommending got the best, we got the best responses from their references. I'm just giving you that information so that you'll have it. I'm not trying to sway the decision here. But, but those are the things that we've done to try to add some clarity to whether or not this is the right thing to do.
Right, and I appreciate the due diligence. If you could just make sure it's based off that reduced square footage because it sounds like we will have to come back once we incorporate the old tax commissioner's office, it's gonna be good. So if you could just clarify that, if this board is comfortable moving forward, because if it's on that reduced square footage, I'm comfortable.
I, I concur with you, Madam Chair. You know, we could sit here and establish a policy that, uh, well, let's just go with the second highest bid. You know, because you couldn't be going out on a limb. And you're, you, you bring up a good point about, about Lithia Springs. We chose them based on all the knowledge we had input and references. And it turned out to be not the quality work that, that we would like to see. So if you just establish a policy, let's go with the second highest from now on, and we'll never have that problem. I'm being facetious.
I can tell.
Because you, you could, you could, you could have a problem with any one of these vendors. And then, then you would have to address it, and that's why we have a thirty-day get out of house, uh, uh, part, part, part of the contract. So I would, I would like us to see us go, go forward if we're, if the chair and, and can cooperate with, uh, Director Peacock.
Yeah, just make sure they reduce. Yeah, make sure they reduce this in there because, but it is a formula out there for square footage on cleaning. I've had my fair share of digging and doing some research in this out there. And that one oh eight was pretty close to that formula that's out there. So if we could just make sure that this person is well aware that it's reduced, and then I know they'll come back and we have expectations that he's gonna expect more once that building is up, I'm comfortable.
And this, and this is a huge firm.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, one more time, I get it, guys, but it's almost like forty percent difference. Like, you got that type of scale? You that efficient?
I'll stay with you.
Yeah, you, you, you're that efficient? You're that efficient? That, everybody else is, it's sort of a, distribution is usually, okay, I'm gonna put my statistic out there. Distribution is pretty much in the middle, it's the norm, you know, right? Now, you got this outlier that's so far off, it's like, okay, that's an outlier, hmm. It's like, hmm. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at, I keep looking, like, okay, um, it, it's one of those where all things being equal, it just seems to be a little bit off. And so now I'm gonna look at the operation, like, okay, are you that efficient? I, I appreciate that. I mean, are you just giving us that cost? I just wanna get the contract. I just wanna undermine, it could be a loss leader, it's like, I, so I'm back to the quality. I, I, and so while y'all work on square feet, I'm like, I'm back to quality. I know that I experienced back in, with, with, with that part. And so I, I, I just know when I feel something this far off, it's not plus or minus five or ten percent, it's an order of magnitude. That's my issue. But I'm willing to let y'all go do your homework again. I'll go with the majority. I, I'll, I'll be prepared to vote at its times that I respectfully yield the floor.
Madam Chair, just the only caution I give is this, if the bid numbers are out, the, the bid requirements allow y'all to reject any of all bids, I'm assuming, and Bill confirmed it for me. I think the information flow needs to go through Bill because if there becomes a dialogue that is outside of the bid requirements, there, there could be some problems downrange. So I'd just be very cautious, Bill. I know you know how to do it, but let Bill give y'all whatever information you need. When there's dialogue after the bids are exposed, that can lead to a problem. So he knows what to do.
Okay, got it.
Just one, just one comment to this. So this particular item, it appears that we, you're, you're moving forward, so it'll be on the agenda item for tomorrow. Am I correct? Or you, are you saying we're pausing? Where are we going with this particular item?
If the square footage has been reduced, I mean, this, this is based on the reduced square footage, we're gonna go forward. If not, we need to table it and then look at it a little more. And that'll allow our director to make sure he made this information very clear to those four bidders. Because it's reduced, they may not be aware that it's reduced. We just wanna make sure everybody understands, everybody is, um, saying the same thing. Y'all talking the same language, or speaking the same language. So it's just based on what, uh, when you get back with me, Director Peacock, let us know the date. And if, 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 if it's not correct, Lisa will remove it and it'll be taken from us. So that's-
So I'm only saying, though, so however, 'cause first of all, I gotta go back and look what I looked at, and I gotta see what he's got. Don't know when that information will possibly come up, but at the end of the day, if we're gonna do that, though, take your, your direction, and let's pull this off and let it be a separate, not a consent agenda vote.
Right, we can do that. Okay.
Want to move on to that point?
So there's no presentation?
Right.
I, I mean, I was looking forward to at least getting my quality question answered, but let, okay, let me, let me, let me look the guy in the eye and ask my typical set of questions, like, okay, you're telling me that you can deliver this, and me being a, you, you, so there's a, and again, it, it's, it's not enough money perhaps for me to afford, you know, sort of suggest that we bring them in. But I thought that's what I was hearing, that we at least wanted to pause enough to have the presentation, get the clarity on the data and so forth. But it sounds like, okay, we're just so urgent about getting this done. I'll yield to the majority of, of you guys, uh, again, to your point, take it off to, take it off consent, we go with that.
One more comment. We have extended, uh, our current vendor for another sixty days. So we've done that because the intent, my understanding was that we were going to do the interview process. So we went ahead and made arrangements with our current vendor to continue in through the end of February. So again, it's totally up to the board whether we, you approve it today or whether we delay it and do the, the meetings. Uh, the square footage thing's gonna be a, a big question, and I'll get the answer just as quickly as I can, too.
I'll just add, Nancy, again, the more information we get, the better off we can kinda have conversation, though. So with that being said, if you already extended it to end in, end in February, why don't we let a new committee, that, this new committee that could possibly vet it, we get a chance to kinda ask our questions, make sure that we all assure. And then that may take my confidence levels at a high that I can believe in. But at, at this point in time, that's why I said we'll have to be considered and, and make it a separate vote. However, if we already extend it to February, why not put off, let it come back to the committee unless the committee vetted, or more so than anything, so I yield.
Okay. Let me just say this, if you change the process that was advertised, you need to consider rejecting all the bids- consider rejecting all the bids and starting over, if you're going to go that route, if you're going to, and I don't know what, and I'm just saying the generality, because I haven't looked at this all, but Bill, whatever parameters you lay out to respective bidders, you got to follow that process. If you're going to amend as you go and you end up changing who you award, you're going to get sued.
This was a strictly a price. There was no, obviously we want a quality company, but we didn't ask for qualifications, we didn't ask for proposals, it was a price-only bid.
Well, i- if y'all want to add other components to that, you need to think about whether you need to reject all bids and start over with it and put that in your request for proposal. And that's what, I'm fleshing out now what we actually asked for, and I'm not sure what we asked for. I'll defer to you as to process, but if you add a process in that's not been advertised and you change the award, you're going to have a problem.
I agree.
Madam Chair, legal question. The discussion was about having follow-up interviews with?
Four. The top four.
Top four. Why, why the top four? If the same bid process was, was put out to bid, and, and as you mentioned, keeping the pop, the process consistent through all of the, of the applicants, you'd have to call all six of them. Wouldn't you, why would you just call in four?
That's the question. What I'm worried about is it sounds like it was a price-only bid and there was no other requirement, so now you're adding requirements. That's, that's my concern, that if you want to add requirements, if, if it was not a qualified bid, if it didn't have any parameters or thresholds.
There was, there was a scope of work. There was a scope of work attached, but again, that defined what the, what we wanted done in the courthouse.
Well, I think what they're worried about, Bill, would be if I came in and said I would do it, who's never cleaned before in my life for 50,000, would I have won, won this bid? Is that a problem? Because I can't do it.
It's, our ordinance gives us the ability to determine the award of a bid based on the best interest of the county. So our decision is not just based on price, it's, it's price plus what's in the best interest of the county.
Right. So just, where are we at, point of order? We want to just pause until the first city here. I mean, we're not doing anything right now, I think administratively, but like some actions we're taking, independent of the board, to extend the current services with a stay. So, okay. With that, can we just, I mean, we, we, we don't have to necessarily say that we're going to take a court action, but we can pause to think about it. We, we can be unsettled, we're not forced that we must make a decision on the 18th of Tuesday. So on, on Tuesday of December 2018, so I'd rather just pause for a second, it's just, I'm okay. Madam Chair, I'm going to yield to you guys. If it's only agenda round, I don't know where I'm going, but I'd say pause and bring it up in the first year.
Commissioner, just a legal question, the bid prices are out there, so if we pull it back and we don't change the scope, then everybody has seen everybody else's bid. This doesn't look good. So I yield back.
But if you change the scope and you make sure that the square footage is correct, and I believe that is a courtesy to those vendors, I would want to know.
That they're given the same.
Yeah, that's where they have the same, you know, the appropriate square footage for this particular project at this time, I think that we could just.
It appears they were given a, given a square footage much greater than what they're actually going to be cleaning.
So it's unsettled for us to decide, right?
They all got the same information, they all got the same information, but it does appear that the square footage that Mark has is for a lot more of the courthouse than they're actually going to be cleaning.
Madam Chair, in that case, this is a simple case, that this needs to be rebid, because they were given, they were given the qual, they were given an incorrect qualification, you know, 125,000 square feet or whatever. They all need to be given the correct number amount.
I don't disagree.
To me, that's, that's.
They need it on the square footage, man, all they have to do is adjust the square footage, but they've seen the other.
Yeah, yeah, it's true.
Their square footage says.
We're, we're uncomfortable, it's okay. We, we just got to pause, redo it over.
We have a 60-day window, so that'll allow you to rebid it, because you seem like you gotten, received confirmation that it was on a larger square footage than what it really should be.
It, it was.
Okay, okay, that sounds good. We'll move on to the next item.
Just qualify. So y'all, y'all would need to take formal action to reject any and all the bids, Madam Chair, and then authorize a new bid with whatever parameters, Bill. That needs to be formally done, so tomorrow. Well, you can do it whatever, but if you table this, he can't just go rebid it while we got bids sitting there, we'd have to reject them first and then rebid.
Okay, we'll reject it tomorrow. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is tab number, is it 22? Tab number 22, authorization to award the bid for gravel materials for Martin Marietta for the period from January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2019. Director Peacock.
Yes, ma'am. We sent the bid out, we got one response back from Martin Marietta, which used to be a blue.
Circle.
Blue circle. Their prices show an average of a 10% increase over what, they were the low bidder last time, last year, so they're, we're recommending that we go with them again, but there is a 10% increase in their price.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, I'll move to the next item, tab number 23, authorization to award the bid for asphalt materials for CW Matthews as the primary vendor, and to Baldwin, Baldwin Paving, ER Snell Contractor as secondary vendors from the period, for the period from January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2019. Director Peacock.
Yes, ma'am. Asphalt materials were bid, we had our bid opening on November 30th, we received bids from Baldwin, ER Snell, and CW Matthews. CW Matthews, the Douglasville plant is the cheapest, but even so, there's still a, the, the increases range from 17 to 25% for each of the unit prices. So there is a, a pretty good increase in asphalt materials for this year. CW Matthews is, we were suggesting would be the primary vendor, and then go to the others if, if needed.
Seventeen percent increase?
It, it ranges from 16 to 25% based on the product that we purchase.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. Director Valentin, maybe you'll stand by, so, okay, so prices are increasing, and you talk about asphalt, so that's going to impact my LMIG, road miles, paved, resurfaced, whatever you want to call it, or splosh, is that accurate?
Yeah, that's correct.
So, again, we're trying to extend over time, and we're setting expectations of the public, that our intent was to do this, and we have a list of things, so the list that you, we, we just approved in our last meeting, Director Valentin, will this impact that? In other words, you had an estimate, and again, these are materials, I know we still got to go out and do all the bidding, but I mean, frame the correlation between all this. What did this just tell us? That we'll have less road miles because we only got so much of a budget?
Commissioner, there, there is a strong possibility that the bids will come in higher than our estimate, however, it, it is not going to be this order of magnitude, it's not going to be 25% because we structure the bid in such a way that we anticipate some of the increase. So we may have to revisit the bid in terms of whether we eliminate some roads or add additional funding to, to let the contractor, to award the contract, but I do not anticipate a 17 to 25% variance when the bids go.
All right. So I'm making my, my completely common, this is for my colleagues that were here when we had that, what we went over, we had used capital transportation fund, followed on that, because we had an estimate that was higher, and I, I can't support any taking money from the general fund or anything to sort of make up higher costs. It's like, no, you need to, what we didn't do then, which we should have did, was to scale back the list. And, and again, it's, it's just what it was, and so, I mean, I'm just making a comment just for the record, that I, I can't support if it comes in, you know, some order back too, too far over. It's just like, we'll scale the list back, but we don't have that.
It's, it's kind of obvious that we're out of sequence here. What we should know is what our costs are going to be before we make the list, so we can project out how many road miles we can pay. So I would like staff in, in Mark to determine if, if we can modify the timeline so that we get these materials bids before we make a list. It'd look to me like that would be kind of simple, so maybe the, to modify the timeline, maybe the, maybe this contract needs the nine months or eight months, so we can kind of get, get in sync and know what our cost's going to be when we come up with LMIG or splosh paid with in the future. It's too late now.
Commissioner, if I may, there is perhaps some adjustment that we can make, however, there is an anticipation of what the price is going to do by the contractor. So if we scale back, if we, if we go earlier on the bid, they're going to have a, a risk factor in to their price, because they don't know what, what the price is going to be. It just so happens that we are so close to the end of the year that they have a better grasp of what 2019 is going to do. If we, if we did it earlier, they will factor in that unknown, and potentially, we may wind up with not as much of a, a, a bid that reflects their actual cost, they may just cover the risk.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not so sure I was, I was clear. I'm not saying that the materials cost needs to be bid so far in advance that they can't make a learned, you know, decision on what their price needs to be, but it's, it's a sequencing between material costs and the construction goals. The LMIG.
LMIG.
Yeah, LMIG and whatever, XYZ list, so just, I, I leave it in your hands, it just seems we, we're out of sequence here. We come up with a list, and then we get a price on materials, you know, three months later or whatever, oh, well, it looks like we can't do the list.
I, I did, did notice that we do have a wrong date on number 23. This is only a six-month award, so we will only go through the end of June. We only do asphalt on a six-month basis.
Well, I think that helps.
So rather than December 31st, it's June 30th.
Thirty. That makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. I yield back.
All right, I'll move on to the next one. The next item is tab number 24, authorization to award the bid for liquid asphalt to Blackledge Emotions Incorporated for the period for, from January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2019. Director Peacock.
Yes, ma'am. Blackledge Emotions, I guess, is the local, most local vendor, and they have been who we've been using for quite a while. This is the first time we've actually sent out a bid in many years for this product. Normally, we just buy from the local vendor, but we decided to go ahead and just see if there were other people that could provide it at, at a better rate. Unfortunately, Blackledge is the only one that submitted a bid, and so their price is 2.14, $2.14 per, let's go quickly, how much is what volume, is that, is that for per gallon? Per ton, or what? Per gallon?
I guess per gallon.
I think it is. I think it is. And do you know what it was in the past, what we had been paying?
I do not, but I can offer this, when it's been other counties and agencies that purchase this product, and when they bid it out, regardless of where they're located in the metro area, very often, this is the only bidder that they get, so they are the lowest in the area.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Farmer, if you have to answer? Tab number 25, authorization to award a contracted Crown Contracting Group LLC to perform office space demolition and renovation at the Douglas County Courthouse, and authorize Chairman to sign all related documents. Director Peacock again.
Yes, ma'am. I will say this, that this particular agenda item is dependent on the passage of the 2019 budget, because the dollars to finance this agenda item is included in the 2019 budget. But we went ahead and put it on there so that we could keep moving, knowing that you will approve the budget.
Before this.
Before this item comes up in the consent agenda.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
So this, this, and this is for the demolition and rebuild of the assessor's office downstairs on the first floor, to move in the solicitor's folks down there. So that's what this is for.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Thank you. We'll move on to tab number 26, authorization to award a contracted Johnson Controls Security Solutions LLC for the installation of five Abogon, what is it, Abogon cameras and memory capacity for the server, and authorize Chairman to sign all related documents. Director Peacock.
Yes, ma'am. This is finishing up the, the last of the cameras that's needed for the security of the courthouse, and we're just asking that you, we be given the, be given, be given the authority to go ahead and move ahead with this. This, this price is based on state pricing, and it's about $4,000 less than the actual contractor that did, the original contractor that did the work, so we're basing this contract on state pricing.
Any questions from the board?
The money is sourced, it exists, is it contingent? On the, on the budget being approved? Is it already?
No, no, this, this money is in the budget.
Already. In, in eighteen's budget.
Uh-huh.
And it didn't get moved over. In other words, we, we kept that here. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
I mean, Director Holden, is that true?
She's got to check.
I mean, this one was something that you or Dick's had to go back and?
No, this is, no, this is, this is Mark's prices for here in the courthouse.
Oh, okay. Mark, do you know, are you aware of that, haven't you?
I haven't labeled this now, but I'd like to know where the source of the money is coming from.
No, I think it's from his budget, it's not from anywhere else.
It's from the 2018 budget. He's, Mr. Price is just not here to speak to it, but.
We'll get to it, so I'll, I'll take it off, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'll move on to tab number 27, authorization to award various annual contracts for maintenance and services at the Douglas County Courthouse, and authorize Chairman to sign all related documents. Director Peacock again.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. There are three other contracts slash agreements. One is with Trane, they do the annual maintenance and inspection for our big chillers, our HVAC system out back. We have two chillers and all the air handlers, and Trane is the, is, has proprietary ability to go in and get a lot of the parts and things that other vendors may not be able to. So we want Trane to be our vendor for this next year, for the chiller annual maintenance and inspection. Then Johnson Controls again, for fire, life, safety, annual inspection and maintenance. This is to inspect our fire panels and peripherals, all the smoke detectors, the sprinkler systems and water backflow preventers. So again, this is just the, the testing of the system, and we're asking that Johnson Controls, they did it this past, no, I'm sorry, Critical Systems did it this past year, but Johnson Controls has actually given us better pricing for next year. And the last one is for Kone Elevator, for the service, service and inspection of the seven elevators in the courthouse. Again, this is state pricing for US communities, which is less than what we're actually paying Kone today to provide the services, a little bit less.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, so just, just help me bridge the gap, we have an energy odd going on, we've got a replacement, and I think we pretty much should be halfway through, if, if not with controls, for the sake of the conversation, which is only a part of this item. And so I want to know that, okay, now we're, we got new stuff that we're maintaining, and I know this contract is a replenishment of an old contract, some old stuff that was old, now we have a bunch of new stuff that's in. Can you just bridge the gap, and it may not be, I just, can somebody speak to the difference?
Well, I don't think we've actually done, done anything new to the fire panel or the smoke detectors or any of that, so that's existing equipment.
Right. I don't think we have.
I can speak a little bit, the, the controls that Ameresco is putting in, they kind of, they bring together all of the existing controls.
Okay.
And part of our contract with Ameresco is we maintain and keep upgrading all of the existing stuff. They bring in a system that pulls it all together.
So it integrates everybody, one view, one dashboard. I'm oversimplifying, but is that?
That's correct. So these individual controls still have to be updated, maintained as they always have. We're just pulling it all into one spot, ma'am.
Okay. That's why I asked. I mean, I didn't want it to be discounted, but I was seeking, but you answered my question. I'm good.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a question. I'll move forward to the next item. The next item is tab number 28, authorization to form and calling new committees, purchasing oversight committee, residential development committee, and tax abatement compliance committee. These, I'll just start with purchasing. Just to give you an idea with that, going to entail ahead of approaching the question. And that is basically, it's just procedural based. It's for competitive bidding, just to kind of talk back and forth about that, identify opportunities for software technology upgrades. So it's not in the weeds, managing purchasing or orders because that's too much. It's just an oversight in a lot of facilities or shows that a lot of counties do have oversight. And that's one that they look at as well. So I've kind of benchmarked a few other counties. They did have a purchasing oversight and that's one that I would like to see added this year as we go into 2019. And then the last one or the other two that I just mentioned would be the residential committee, development committee, which was already kicked off this year, just by looking at those hyphens and we continue to keep our eye on that as we try to deter light and spur our economic development. And then next, tax abatement compliance committee. And that's one that we picked up on that we needed this year too because we had some outliers out there that we needed to address. And we already started the process, so we just wanted to make sure that these committees were official. So I will be announcing all the committee assignments on the first of January, our first meeting in January. But if we needed to get these approved, I would have those, people already have in mind who's going to be the chairman and vice chairman for these committees. But I just wanted to make sure they need to be official. So that's the reason for that. So we'll move on to tab number 29. Well, first of all, any questions from the board? I'll move to tab number 29, authorization for chairman to execute a 2019 employment agreement for contract employees. Legal department.
Mark, you got a notebook with all these.
Yes.
Do you want to tell them?
So essentially, all the contracts are on my desk for the board's review. And we sent an email out last week stating the same. Plus, we sent a spreadsheet with the amounts of the contract.
Okay. Hope you feel better, Mark. Vice Chairman, I'll see.
Yeah. And again, I understand this process the same way. We appreciate that. Here's a question for all of our contacts, because I haven't, I need to look at them, let's say, or at least a couple of them that I'm interested. Are all the contracts, do they all have one-year terms? I just want confirmation. I know one of them doesn't have.
No, there's a couple of four-year, which is voter registration and what's the other one?
Monica Miles is a two-year.
Monica Miles is a two-year.
Okay. All right. So again, term of contract, notice, are they all, I'm just looking for consistency. I don't have to believe it is, ma'am, Chair. I can just take this offline. I'm just curious. So I'll, Mark, you don't have to talk. I'll get with you more clarified.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, and I voiced this in our project process last year, and Commissioner Mulker agreed with me, said we needed to look at this, the fact that contract employees also get merit increase. We increased some individuals this time, and that's the way we've always done contract employees. But I don't agree that they get the merit increase. I can see the cost of living, but I can't see the merit. And we were going to look at that between last year and this year to see if we should revisit that standard that we're doing. Does anybody recall the conversation in the opening meeting?
No, I remember something about, I remember something about the merit discussion. And I think, I think it was a follow-up discussion among the five commissioners in legal, whether it was appropriate or should it be changed.
Well, my contention is when they're put under contract, they're no longer merit employees. And they should not get the merit increase. Cost of living raise is one thing, but the merit increase. And we're going to discuss this between last year and this year, and I guess the all.
We did.
Well, going to 2019, I'll take, 2020, I'll take it as we before.
Because, you know, we've selected, we selected certain people and they got increases where everybody else didn't. So that's the way the contract employees should be, based on performance.
I mean, I think that's a valid question, an issue. But I'd put your promises.
Yeah, and what I want to do is, and when I say I'm going to do something, I always deliver. But what I want to do is benchmark, we'll go to see what other places I've done with contracts. What I'm accustomed to is just what we're doing. And I think this has been the history of the Douglas County government.
I've always been consistent in that, too. But they're not merit employees. So why do they get a merit increase? That's my question.
Ma'am, Chair, just so you know, Commissioner.
Yeah, let me wait. And I'll let you clean yourself, can you, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am?
Yes.
All right. And again, compensation in a moderate-sized county that has grown up, just becoming, it was a way business was done here. You took care of your own. You create contracts, you create employment agreements to allow people to have parachutes, you made them feel comfortable. You gave them great benefits. There was a lot that was built in. All you have to do is look at it and be real about, like, okay, yeah, okay, I see how the cash flows. You took care of your own. You gave contracts, it gave you flexibility to build in certain perks. And so I'm listening to this and it's like, okay, how can they? And this is me. I don't have a, I'm okay with it. I don't feel bad about it. I just sort of like, hmm, yeah, we could, maybe we couldn't. But I, to change it, it's just like, but why? I just haven't heard a compelling argument of it in the fact that, but yeah, I get it. But now you will now take away that, that was institutionalized over time. You know, I just, I'm a realist. I look at it for what it really is. It's like, yeah, I get it. You know, should you go focus on something else to sort of, like, I don't know about that one. That one's going to require some real debate if you decide to take that one up, ma'am, Chair. I mean, again, yes, I have a great memory. I do recall stuff. And I, yes, you are consistent. I just don't know if I would be on the side of, maybe while we didn't get anywhere, you got to get three people, at least two people to discuss and three to even get changed. And so I personally just, I don't know about this. And I think about the employees that got it right now. I'm like, yeah, leave them alone right now. I got stuff I can work on right now. I don't know if I would want to touch that. But, okay. But I will respect my peers and we'll go over there. I yield.
Ma'am, Chair, just without, it's a policy decision for y'all how to handle this, but I just want to point out, there's a difference in the employment contracts in group item number 29 versus the vendors in 30, which include me. The vendors in 30 don't get merit. I haven't had a raise in over a decade. I just want to make sure it's clear. But the 29, the people in 29, they are subject to portions of the merit system. The difference is they're easier to fire. And so their employees, in fact, the performance and rating review is in their contracts. And so I just want to make, be careful that they aren't vendors in the sense the group in 30 are vendors. I'm a vendor. And the employees are, they're employees for all other purposes except for the way they get fired. They waived their right and y'all elected not to have that position. It's a control thing. It's how we move people if we want to move them more quickly, whether or not bureaucrats their whole life if we don't want to be. But I will say, when we're talking about performance and ratings, they are subject to that section of the merit system. There's certain portions of the merit system that's actually buried in their contract that specifically apply. Now, I'm not saying it's clear they automatically get raises or coles and all that. But there's a difference between the group in 29 versus the group in 30, which I'm in. I'm in the group in 30.
Okay. So we, it's pretty self-explanatory. And my, the whole notion of my idea around merits and coles for our directors, number one, we have to compete. Number two, if you go to other counties, you look at those salaries based on these positions that we're hiring and those, some of the sizes are a little larger. And we have some that are comparable. They're stepping their game up and I want to step ours up. So I'm very comfortable with just the little bit that we have. I looked at the list for many years and I talked about it last year. About four or five years, we had, we had a period no one got a raise around here in Douglas County. So I'm very comfortable with my decision on moving forward with the idea of just giving them something to keep them motivated because they can go elsewhere. The market is wide open today. It's competitive. When you look at just purchasing, let's say a director somewhere else, they may, they start off at 140,000, 50,000. We got to step our game up if we just keep, because we have some talent here, some talent that I want to retain. So I look at just, retention is very important to me too, mission. Because we have to retain a talent here. Certainly want them to feel rewarded based on the amount of work that they do. And when I look at those scales in other parts of Georgia, we're still behind a little bit. And I'm trying to, I'm probably from that director's standpoint and also for my staff in which I'm trying to just take care of the whole, I'm looking at holistically and I've done that. And I'm, I'm trying. We're behind. The recession put us behind. And I know I can't make up a lost time, but what I will do as the leader of this county is to see what I can do to compensate our staff based on the performance they perform. I am looking at performance base. That's important to me. Director Perry is working with me on that. I don't like the idea of everybody getting the same thing. That's not fair. We need to look at performance-based increases and that we are working on that. We have the system, but we just need the software. As we go forward, everybody needs to say, you know, those directors or when they evaluate their staff, they need to, if 3% is awarded for that particular year, somebody may get a 2.5 because they didn't step their game up. They didn't check all the boxes and they didn't meet all the criteria. So, but that's going, that's coming forward. Usually in government, everybody gets the same thing. And I'm accustomed to that. But right now, that's just my take. And I just want to not change that. We could probably chase some other things, some other brackets rather than this. But I appreciate and respect your ideas. I think that's important and I respect you. Okay? I'm going to move on to the next item. So we'll move on to the next item. Next item, we're going to talk about number 30. And that's what the attorney just talked about.
And these are all your vendors. These are annual contracts with all the vendors listed. And it looks like the list has grown, but really it hasn't. The juvenile court, some of these public defenders, the way their contract has to be specific as to how it's spelled out. So it's the same position. And those are also in a notebook. And Mark, did you highlight those too, like you did the group in 20, 29?
Highlighted.
Maybe you got them in a notebook.
There are notebooks on the desk. Also, there's another notebook for employee correlation. So that notebook is our employees that don't have a contract that have an employment contract that have correlation. So that notebook is on the table as well. There are two contracts that are not ready. West Georgia Regional Live Road, we typically on an annual basis approve it in December and then approve it again in January because the contract ends up changing. So we're going to wait until January on that one. Also, Old Courthouse Inc., which is history and tourism. So I reviewed their contract. So we need to sit down with them and come up with a new contract. Because 90% of the items that are in there is no longer following their purview. So those two will come in January.
Okay. And I won't, my commissioners, I know you can read, this is a long list, but just take the hand out of my sails. So if you go, just look at the list tomorrow and go forward to, there's quite a few names. I just have one question before I go into the approval of expenses tomorrow. Well, let me just do that first. Approval of expenses. Commissioners, please start to look at our expenses and be prepared accordingly. And then I wanted to just ask our director of purchasing, Director Peacock, if you had an insight. We talked about the bidding out of the copper funerals and, you know, we talked about seeing if we could bring in a lower price. And that's something I promised the citizens of Douglas County. Do you have anything, an update?
We did receive one bid back from Jones Wynn. I think it was.
I think it was. They're the only ones that got it.
Yeah, I went blank there. And I think that, remember, I said, I don't have it with me, because their price was $815 to do a cremation of a body, which we had been paying 19, 915, I think.
Nine hundred and fifty.
So also Jones Wynn is the only, only one in the county that has a crematorium. So any of the other funeral homes either go to Jones Wynn or send them out of the county to Atlanta to be cremated. So.
So you said it came in at 815?
I think it was 815.
Okay. So that you have had in a dialogue with the coroner so we can make sure you just?
The coroner has taken the initiative, initiative to have a conversation with Jones Wynn.
Okay. Good. Okay. Sounds good. All right. Let's move on to the next item.
Just so it goes beyond the state of conversation for the coroner and Jones Wynn, would like the commission to follow through and make sure there's an agreement reached. I'll do that.
Yeah, he's going to do. That's why I was kind of, making sure we closed the loop for.
I yield back.
Okay. Commissioner?
Yeah. So what did I hear? Did we go out, so we had a bid? What, is this some type of administration? We went out and just checked some prices and now it's get set administratively? Or what did I just hear?
We sent, we developed a scope of work that we wanted the funeral homes to provide to us, mainly the cremation of copper bodies.
Okay.
And that quote, again, is not a bid, it's a quote, was sent out to the funeral homes. And the only response that I saw come back was from Jones Wynn. And again, that's because they're the only ones that have a crematorium. But we gave the other funeral homes an opportunity to say, remember, they wanted to be involved and were willing to, you know, make some other arrangement to get their bodies cremated at a lower price than what they may currently be charging us.
I think I got it. So this call, speaking below the $5,000, this is on the administrative side?
It is.
I think that this is something because of the dollar amount. Just make, to your point, Commissioner Mulker, make sure we've got this in writing, they set expectations with the coroner. I mean, I just closed the gap. I got it. I got where I'm at. I'm good. It doesn't need to come before us. I think this was just what, an acknowledgement is what I'm hearing. But, yeah, work on administrative executive side.
Director Holden?
I just had an answer to the question on number 26 about the award to the contracted Johnson Controls Securities Solutions for the five cameras and memory capacity. Michelle back there, she had her computer out. And so she looked it up and she confirmed it is in the 2018 budget.
Okay.
It is.
It is. 2018.
So we got money, we didn't move it.
Correct. Thank you, Michelle.
And last but not least is tab number 36, Tourism and History Board of Corning. And I believe I closed that just an update for us.
I remember it in fact.
Oh, you want to do it? Okay. All right. Well, with that, yes.
Ma'am, Chair, again, I backed up the board appointments. I mean, it's something that I think citizens and the public sometimes are interested in. Sometimes we don't get as many applicants as we would like. I mean, sometimes it's hard to fill some of these positions. But I just want to encourage citizens who are listening to this, those who either come through our active citizens, civic engagement type organizations, or people that we, who are in sort of that circle that sees these things, that we continue to promote and invite people to actually apply. Now, I recognize that people are busy. We've got 150,000 people and we're always in executive session. We're trying to find names, trying to encourage people to sort of apply to this. But this stuff, and I guess I'm going to close with this, we do advertise these, don't we? Can you just, for the record, there is a process that everybody's open to do it and that it's just not, you know, it be, I want to say, awarding of seats to friends. I just want to address that. Anybody can apply to these positions and stuff. And I had to address that because the citizen brought that up before. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I do reach out to the boards when we do have openings coming up, just to inquire if existing members want to be reappointed. And whether they do or don't, I still advertise in the Sentinel and as well as on the website, any openings that the boards have.
So any citizen can apply?
Yes.
Whether if there's, in the sake of the conversation or not, anybody can apply?
Correct.
Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
And is there a duration at which we keep them on file? Does they just go into a file? Was it a refresh? I mean, just, again, just for the record.
I do keep them on file. We do, currently, we do not refer back to them as we have openings, just because a lot of times, maybe a year that's lapsed or even two, you know, because some of these boards, it's every four years or every three years.
Right. So it's sort of like, almost like our vendors, where they fill out an application and stuff and then they may not hear anything. There's a need for them to come out and seek and look and so. It ain't like we will knock on your door. So Director Peacock, I acknowledge. So again, consistently for the public, you got to stay abreast. You got to have, do your part to apply for these things. So I yield, ma'am, Chair. Thank you.
Ma'am, Chair, and I would augment the discussion on this. I've been working with I, we're working with the director of communications, external communications. I'm going to provide our county clerk with lists of people that have to do the citizens' academy and perhaps get them on, kind of on the continuing mailing list, because I know several that have expressed interest. In fact, several of them have participated. But just kind of as ongoing and as we graduate another class, they go into the, into the feed, if you will, so I'll work with the county clerk on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments before I call for a check with the attorney to see if we have an executive session?
We're going to need all three, madam chair.
Okay.
Real estate litigation personnel.
Okay, thank you so much. Do we have a motion to go into executive session, board commissioners?
Salute.
Second. We have a motion in the second. I'll in favor say aye. Aye. Deputy, a break and we'll sit back and.
Yes, ma'am. You will do that. That was efficient. I was.
Okay, we're back on. Board of commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments?
Yes, ma'am chair.
Okay.
This morning, ma'am, yeah, this morning, ma'am chair, we, we had a transportation committee meeting. The meeting was rescheduled, it was supposed to be for tomorrow, our standing meeting. We just moved it up. I just want to say that for the record. County clerk, I just want to confirm that it was properly announced and notice was given to the public that it moved?
Yes, sir.
County administrator, was there anything else out of that when they made some recommendations? Is there anything that's coming forth on this agenda item?
No, not on this agenda.
Okay.